This work section of the Board of Ed took order. Please rise and say your special contributions.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for the meeting agenda? Ms. Dayton, second Ms. Olson. All those in favor? Zero, thank you. All right, our first item in business, the discussion item, is the textbook recommendations for environmental science, AP art history, and Mandarin Chinese. Ms. Pelosi.
Evening. In your board packet you have textbook recommendations to consider. We have honors, environmental science, AP art history, and Mandarin Chinese. Each text is presented in the textbook recommendation form that serves as a summary of the rigorous vetting process in determining the best instructional resource to complement the course, the curriculum, and to support all learners. As a quick reminder, a team of teachers and administrators review multiple texts and use the core standards, published criteria, as guidance to review each text. The critical areas we review are highlighted in section three and four of each recommendation. And then finally, all texts are rated against a rubric, which is after each section for the book. This measure supports the final decision on which text best supports the program, the curriculum, the teachers, and students. So the first one we're going to do is the environmental science. So with me this evening to recommend honors environmental science is Sheila Saval, our student coordinator, and John DeLuca, one of our high school educators and program administrator for science. And they can speak further to this recommendation briefly and answer any questions you may have. So join me. And if you wanted to add anything to background of that text?
So we reviewed five textbooks for the environmental science class. We selected one, Miller and Spoolman from Sun Gage Learning, after a review with teachers and students and setting out a parent survey as well. The online materials that are available to this are quite rigorous, we believe. This would be a complete online textbook, so our students would use it electronically. I'm happy at answering any questions that you may have.
Dr. Gilde.
Thank you. Do you know what your current business is?
This is a new course.
What's a new course? You've not had a book for this before. Okay. I don't remember this.
So discuss support the new course that was approved back then.
And you write the curriculum before you do the textbook review? Do you write, do you have a curriculum first and then?
We did.
Ms. Dayton.
So in the description it says that this new textbook will allow teachers to easily measure student skills and outcomes. How is that captured? Is there assessment built into the textbook? And if so, is there a nice backend system that reports out?
Yeah, they have a highly personalized platform. And so I was actually taking a look at it today. And students can engage in activities selected by the teacher. And they have a nice summary of the activities that they've worked on over a given time for a unit, for a chapter, for the entire year. And so it's very visual. It actually kind of looks like our data dashboard. But it's for this, the work of, that's involved in the textbook. So like I said, the textbook has lots of activities, lots of practice quizzes, that sort of thing. And those are tracked via this online platform.
We will leave you with a login. You can actually see a demo of it, so that way you can access the book and see the digital hot link.
Dr. Francis.
So great, that's my first question. I'd love to add that starting from interactive user tools. A general question for all of them. Very kind of given a price, but we're not given how many students that's expected to be for. I think for all the courses, or just to get a sense of first round cost would be nice. And a lot of times there's, I think for this one it was going to be all the digital, but I think sometimes there's digital and hard copy. And there's some questions on act one, and it's not clear what the cost would be in two different circumstances. So it'd be nice to have that kind of information. Specifically this one, given that it's part of environmental science and having a son who still argues with me about what we're learning and some of the human components of it. But you know, just to be sure that there aren't political things behind this, that you feel like it's really been vetted from that perspective, that it's really looking at from the scientific perspective and not sort of in a political perspective.
Absolutely. Yeah, we had, we have three teachers who teach both AP environmental and honors environmental. And they developed our honors environmental course. So I have the utmost respect in their judgment in terms of scientific accuracy.
We do have a quote. So the quote, the price that you had in the recommendation that would serve 100 students and that comes with a six-year ebook license. That would be the, it's a bundle.
What would happen after the six years?
Well, then we evaluate that and see what they're going to, what addition, what the next addition will offer, as well as if it's going to serve us for the next so many years. So we go through that, that cycle of view.
Anybody else on environmental science? And obviously we'll see all of these as an action item at the next.
That's correct, yes. Okay.
All right, so.
Going to the next book?
Yes, thank you both. Appreciate that. Next up will be AP art history. That book we're going to pass around, I think, for fun.
I hope you brought your muscles. So now I'd like to call up Cora White, our arts coordinator. And with her is Ms. Wong. So they also took this book through a rigorous vetting process. And so they can certainly provide more information and answer any questions you may have. And this will leave in the boardroom for your review.
I know that looks a little intimidating, however.
It's a coffee table book.
It's pretty much. One thing that we looked for is when we were looking for a textbook was we needed a high-quality image for all 250 prints that they have to study on the actual exam. So Liz Vasquez is actually going to be our teacher for next year. So I'm very excited to have her on board. And she suggested this book. It was one of the recommended texts through AP College Board. So we wanted to take a look at that. She also looked at a second text here. And the comparison between the two is readability, really. You know, the first, this one is kind of dry, boring kind of. This is more kid-friendly language. Also the quality of the print between the two books. So I don't know if you want to give these up, Liz, but she's actually marked some sample images so you can compare like the quality of one image versus the book that we have selected. Her super sleuthing skills also led her to find an e-reader, which was really good. We found an e-reader, but it was going to have an additional cost through a different program. But her detective work led her to find the actual electronic version of this book. So we're going to approach it from like a blended approach where we'd like to purchase a classroom set where I could live at home or live in the classroom, as well as the electronic copy that they would have access to. We just didn't want to rely on technology for the quality of the actual image. So we have both avenues.
Ms. Dayton. Teach something ahead. Ms. Dayton.
I agree the quality of the print is really important. But what I really care about is the history and how the history is tied into the study of each image or each object. And I'd love to know the quality of the textbook as a historical source. Both texts are, as a historical source, both texts meet that expectation beautifully. The, so in regards to, it's more about the differences in the language for student readability, as well as also this, one that we've chosen has a lot of extracurricular thinking. So like at the end they'll, they'll pose questions for critical thinking, collaboration, or further knowledge or inquiry. Also in the beginning of the text that we chose has also outlined vocabulary that, so it doesn't, because the class isn't geared towards only art students, so the people who, artists, students who are taking the class might not have that art vocabulary. So it kind of outlines and gives like a starter kit and a foundation.
I mean, we'll keep the book here so that when you have a chance you can look through it before we make the decision in the next meeting.
And Erin, didn't you say in your intro, AP actually gives you a list of the recommends? So I mean, you're not just looking at a broad.
Correct.
You know, you already were able to narrow your search pretty quickly based on the rigors of the AP.
Yes, so all of their audit documents that are provided, that this is just one of a few and this rose to the top in that vetting process. Yes, absolutely.
Also, AP has this community board. And so people posed questions. And the big question was, how do I choose out of this list? And these were the two most popular books. So that's why I focused on these two. I looked briefly at the other ones, but I'm going back from past, from teachers who have this experience working with them.
Any other questions? Ms. O'Neil.
Were there any students on the selection tourney?
No.
And what's your anticipated age group that's going to take AP art history? Is it more for juniors, seniors, or any age? 10th grade to 12th grade? Okay.
Dr. Francis.
So it sounds like you answered the question in your speaking better maybe than in the, in the presentation paper. Just, I just have to say that under 21st century skills, which there's a description of what those are in the rubric, but the answer is yes. Because if they buy a digital version, they can download the app. To me, there's a whole lot more to 21st century skills than just interacting with the digital app. So I think, you know, when you're presenting the answer to that, things like the critical thinking and interactive components, those kinds of things, I think there'd be stronger arguments for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on art history? All right, well, thank you. Ms. O'Neil.
Just one thing. I'm sorry, maybe you said it. How many students will this $5,000 provide for?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty. We're looking to run, we're hoping to run more sessions, but we're thinking one section for next year. But we won't know that for sure.
This is a new course that was approved back in November December.
And that's the digital and the hard copy, right?
Correct.
All right, anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much. And we'll take this up at our meeting. Um, no, I can just go on your recommend and.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is Mandarin Chinese.
Yes, so I'd like to call up Viviana Connor, our world language coordinator. Ni hao.
That's the only Chinese I know.
We would like to, just as a clarification, that this book is to serve the high school only and the courses that it will serve are outlined on that cover page, which would be the.
Chinese, one, two, three, four, and four honors.
Just the resource can be supported can certainly work as a middle school. So I apologize for that, that very describing thing.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we were thorough with, you know, answering the question and meeting the levels. So we vetted two books for Chinese. And we were looking for something that had a little more personalized opportunity, something with an online version, which our current book did not have. And moving towards the 21st century, we found Discovering Chinese, so. The teacher actually saw a demonstration at the Chinese teaching conference last year. So we've been sampling the book. There were students involved with the process as well. And the teachers are extremely happy with the book and putting it forward for your approval.
Any questions? Ms. Dayton.
Gong xi fa chui. Chinese New Year is around the corner, yes. So looking forward to celebrating next weekend. Question for you. It's really difficult to learn the five different tones. And I'd like to know how this might, as a selection, aid students in mastering that difficult skill.
Well, according to the teachers, this book provides a very personalized approach because on the ebook, on the electronic version, which is what we are looking to purchase, students can maneuver the entire textbook with a click. You don't have to go chapter at a time. So there are ways that the teacher is able to differentiate and personalize the instruction depending on the proficiency level of students. And that changes through the tones of the teaching. They can do it seamlessly.
Ms. O'Neil.
So you said this is an ebook, right?
Yes.
How long will that contract last? It's $17,000. What does that provide you?
I believe it's a four-year. I have to look at the quote. If you can pull up the quote. We're looking at 50 students per level. And we were generous with that quote. Once we have the numbers for the courses for next year in April, that quote will be revised. So we went with the worst-case scenario, but it could be very, you know, very different.
Our specialist language teacher, Ms. Olson.
No, no, just, it's at four, or it's at five levels that are doing one, two, three, four, four and four honors? Are those considered separate levels, four and four?
Four and four honors run together because of numbers. Those courses never run independently. They run on top of each other. So even though it's used for both levels, the students are in one classroom. So it's one chunk of students.
Okay, well, 200 students.
Yes.
I'll need to come back with that information because the quote doesn't help us. But the price does include all four volumes and the admin council, as well as the assessments.
Dr. Francis.
It's an ebook, but it, does it have any interactive or things where you can hear or listen?
Yes.
So that would help with the tones and things like that.
There's, there's the ebook and there's also an app to go with it. And at home, they can also practice those tones and so forth. It's very interactive.
So they can hear it.
Yes, absolutely.
So that was one where I was concerned because it sort of sounded like you may or may not get the app. And the app seemed critical to the value of this.
The app is part of the console.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. And we'll take this up at our meeting.
And I'll come back with the subscription years.
Yeah.
Again, we'll leave the textbooks in the boardroom. And I'll make sure that you get this card to log into the science book so that you can see the platform. Thank you.
Viviana, do you want us to sing? And you can pick the language.
You can put all seven.
We know three. All right, we'll give everybody a moment to clear up.
So Erin's now going to host her birthday celebration, not with us, unfortunately.
All right, the next item is a fields update. The BET Budget Committee meeting was earlier this week. There was a lot of discussion about fields. So a timely discussion tonight. Basically take you back to summer 21st. We passed our capital budget. There was a $5 million ask and therefore turfing a middle school field to be determined. Went through the selectmen CIP process where the selectmen made a decision, our board did not, to change the CIP ask and present that to the BET. The ask that was presented was a $300,000 item for studying a, what he called an engineered turf field. That would be a grass field with drainage and probably a pitch on it to clear the water off sooner than later. The other thing he did was he moved up the replacement of the carpets on fields six and seven at the high school, which as we've learned from talking with Gus Lindin and the Parks and Rec Department, we've been told, and we know this for fact, the turf has been in for about 10 years. It actually is going to be in need of replacement soon. And the concern is that they may not certify it for use again, either this year or next year. We just don't know. It's passed its warranty by over two years. And so the timing is such that it will need to be replaced. And the idea from the selectmen is to have that money in the budget so that we're ready to go. And we don't end up with two more fields out of commission. At the BET hearing, and Deborah Hesch from the BET, thank you for coming, sitting in the back, the BET Budget Committee asked a series of questions of Peter Tessie, Justice Cecilia Anna, the Parks and Rec director, and our panel, basically about the selectmen's proposal, about what we had originally asked for. And it really boils down to, what does the Board of Ed want to do? So the BET, I think, was fairly clear. And several of the board members attended that hearing. Really that if we are interested in turfing those fields with artificial turf, we need to decide that we want to do that. We need to actually name the school. I think that's what the BET is looking for. If that's not what we want to do, if we do want to move forward with fixing the grass fields that we have, we need to pick the school so that they know what the proposal is for. They don't really enjoy the TBD. They basically made that very clear in their comments, the members of the Budget Committee and also other members of the BET. Dr. Gilde, I don't know if I missed anything or any of the members. Dr. Francis was there, Ms. Stowe, Ms. O'Neil. So I knew you could chime in and add to that.
So probably with being new, one of my insights from the process was just like with schools, there are always more needs than what the funding cap is available. So they were trying to look at the big picture, I think, through the process of what things could adequately be funded, taxed, you know, built in as part of the tax for residents. And then, you know, what kind of architecture and engineering would be needed, what type of timing would be needed for that. And so basically recommended kind of that phased approach. So I think the reason for it had something to do as well with the finance and all of the different competing priorities throughout town for capital infrastructure projects. So I understood that as part of our, as part of the deliberation of that, of that group. So that is part of, you know, another contextual part of it. So I think, you know, part of it is a little bit of the chicken and egg with the master facility plan and the study. Because if our study would have been done and, you know, the board would have had that time to have had talked about it first. So some of this is just timing. As we're also working parallel with the remediation plans for the different schools at Western, we're probably honestly, it's probably going to be 1920 before we have all the approvals needed for what that appropriate approved plan will be. So we've got, you know, we've got this timing kind of issue. So I think we were trying to buy ourselves some flexibility. And I think there, the town was trying to compromise with us or at least provide this other idea of maybe getting the carpets at the high school re-carpeted first. So it was kind of a compromised decision that provided us some savings. So I think that's. Do you have any for the town overall? Because they had to do it eventually. It just can't change things around. It changed the orders around.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention you were also at the BET. All right, so Ms. Dayton.
So what happens to the other $2.25 million? Okay, that's number one. Number two, are we transferring $300,000 out of our capital budget for Parks and Rec to do work that they otherwise would have had in their own budget under maintenance? Or would this always have come out of our budget? It would have, okay. So where's the other $2.25 million? And can we repurpose some of that money to acquire rental fields for 2018, which we know we cannot find within the town of Greenwich? It's not going to happen. I'm very open to that concept, to make the football team happy, to give them turf, to give them lights. So let's discuss that.
Dr. Francis. Why don't you go ahead, please?
I mean, I was going to say, I'm not completely ready to sort of get up, give up on the concept of turfing. And certainly I would, I would vote, and I think there's reason that we have discussed that Central was kind of our first choice, I think, at this point. And I would like to also get feedback. You know, I was interested to read that actually the principals had really supported the idea of turfing at all of them. Because I, I wasn't convinced that we would necessarily go for all of them, but we would study and pick which one we wanted to go from there. My personal, and we've been talking about Central for a long time because convenient to the high school. I was pretty convinced that a lot of the teams that want to go there from the high school would absolutely want turf. It was interesting to hear that the middle schools want that. And certainly a field that has a lot of drainage issues. The town would like it turfed. So it seemed like there was a lot of support for that. So I was a little surprised to hear that that backed off so quickly. And I think you're right. And we put $5 million in there. And if they want to say, we're not going to give you that much, or if we want to go out and try and get private funding for it, if there's other things we want to do, I want to understand if this stops us from moving forward.
Right. So to answer the question about where the money went, it looks like additional money was put in out years. So the first year would be the A and E type work and then following would be the actual construction work, which is normally how we do our projects.
You know, that's fine. And this is an eight-person board. But I would sure as heck rather have that $2.25 million go into improving our buildings. We said we wanted to spend more money than we traditionally spend. And I don't see why we would suddenly give up that resource and push it into later years if there, if there are projects that are desperately needed for health and safety, maintenance projects that will prevent ruin and devastation in future years that could be taken care of now. So I'm not willing to give up that money.
I guess my pushback, Jennifer, is that we are asking for $15 million for the capital on a plan that was worked with KG&amp;D to do the immediate needs, to get us to the point where the master plan kicks in, to do the rest of it. It is 15. It is 15. It was $15 million with five for the fields. So if you, if you look at the rest of our capital request, it was 20 in total. It was 20 in total. Right. Mr. Chair.
I don't understand what happened. And this board, with all due respect, the only authority you guys have to represent to the town is what this board approves. Okay, so I don't understand how we went into a CIP meeting. And I know from the town administrator, because unless he's not telling the truth, but I'm pretty certain Ben Branyan is a very truthful individual. When I, when I attended the public hearing on the CIP, that was the first time I found out that somebody changed our request. Now, our request was for, our request was for $5 million. That book that was published at that time already had the $5 million taken out. It had already been reduced to $300,000 for A and E. It had already pushed potentially to the year beyond. And I don't understand how that happened because this board never approved that. because this board never approved that. So I'd like to understand how that actually occurred, because, you know, people are saying, they're saying candidly, because I asked them, I said, is this something the selectmen, and that's kind of the thread of my hearing? And they were very clear, and they said, no, your board chair and your superintendent agreed to make this change. So I don't understand who's on first here, because what we need, which is why this board approved it, is we need other all-weather practice fields as early as this next September.
With lights.
Well, let's leave it.
One person at a time.
You know, my point is, we need more all-weather fields. Now, with what's occurred is, it seems we have no plan for that next year. Somehow, we're only asking now for A and E, which certainly pushes it a year later. The other part that's just bizarre to me, which I don't understand, because our own architect, who we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to do a fields assessment, came before this board and essentially testified, no, your fields in six and seven, at the high school, the turf is not end of life and does not need to be replaced. So, by the way, go back and we'll hit it on the tape, I was shocked when they said it. So somehow, this has turned into like a completely different set of priorities, and, and I'm not sure it fits to what it is that we need. And I don't understand where we are anymore, and I'm concerned it's not connected to what we need. Of course, you have the last part, which, you know, somehow they seem to be again acquiescing to Parks and Rec and other properties. I don't understand how, why we're doing that either. But that's, that's kind of the last subject. I kind of like to get an answer to, how did we get in this place for the first two items?
So as part of the C I P process, there were discussions about possibilities. We did not give anything up. We did not say we wanted to walk away. I was very clear at both the C I P meetings and the B E T meetings, fellow board members heard me, that I have no authority to give anything up, that we would come back to our board to have a discussion. What came out of the C I P process was different than the input we put in. I was just as shocked as you were that evening to hear about that change, and then to see it morph into something different when we got to the budget presentation last on Monday night. So it is a process that seems to be ongoing. That, I think, is why the B E T asked both the selectmen and Parks and Rec to come to the budget meeting on Tuesday, and I think that was a helpful discussion. And the direction to us from the B E T, the request from the B E T, is for our board to say what we want. They meet on the 23rd of February, we meet on the 22nd of February. So we have an opportunity to affirm either what we voted on in December, or something different. That is for our board to decide.
Peter, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand that answer, because the superintendent and the, and the board chair sit on the C I P committee. One is a, one is a voting member, one is not. So, and they met at least three times. During that meeting, this was discussed taking out our $5 million field. When did we, when did we strongly object in that meeting to them taking out our $5 million field?
In between the second and third meeting, there was a Parks Field Committee meeting that does not include any board member and does not include me. At that meeting, these determinations were made, and that's what came back. I heard from Ben Brandy, the same time all of you heard from Ben Brandy, and what the change was going to be, or what was prioritized.
What did we say to them? Did we say, in that meeting, did we say, guys, you can't change this because we're voting members on that committee? Did we vote no to that change in that committee?
There was no, there was no vote on each item. Each of us individually, independently rated against a rubric, which I did. We all voted, we all put our numbers in the rubric. The way the rubric is set up, fields and furniture are always going to come in last because they have the least impact, you know, on the entire quality of life of town and blah, 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 blah. You're just the way the rating sheet is. So if you look at the rating sheet, it was prioritized out not by me, or not by Peter Verstein, but by the six or seven votes of that. So my priorities, of course, were different, you know, than what the library reps priority was, or than Amy Severt's priority was, or Katie DeLucas'. So that is the part of this process. We are not fully in control of the C I P process. We are one vote, and the, our two priorities came up fifth and sixth out of the sixth item list on a $65 million capital request and a $45 million budget allowance allocation. Not, not everything was going to be funded.
She's not done, and I'm going to talk.
Not everything was going to be funded, even though we prioritize on that list. And ours came up the last two.
And the C I P process is advisory to the first selectman. Ultimately, he made the decision what to put forward as the capital request. We have gone back to him, again, voicing our opinion, and I did it at the B E T meeting, saying that we had taken a vote, this is what we put forward. I'm surprised to see this as you were. Dr. Francis?
I'm a little less interested in kind of the steps passed, more interested in what are our options moving forward. So it sounds like the B E T is willing to hear if we have more specific priorities, more information we want to give, to reconsider this, because I think some of the members on the B E T are favorable to us moving forward with some of these fields and understanding the general town need for that. So I'd like, and Jennifer can ask a question, but I'd like to think about what are our steps moving forward, and is there a consensus or a plan that we can develop?
Right. And I think, and Jennifer was there, also, all of you that were there should weigh in, but I think the idea is, whatever we want to move forward with, we should take a vote at our meeting on the 22nd, so that it can be transmitted to the B E T, so that they have, when they have their first meeting on the 23rd to consider items, they know where the Board of Education is. Ms. Dayton.
I want to answer the chair's question to the board, and that is, what do you want? So I'm very happy to tell you, as a preview of what I want, I want money for field rentals. The reason for that is health and safety. The reason is our athletes are practicing in the dark in unsafe conditions. I think health and safety in any C I P process should be at the top of the list. I think we can make a case to go back to the B E T and get money if we need it. But we need an estimate from the administration on how many field rentals we need, what the cost would be, and I'm asking for distances less than an hour away. Second thing I want, no, I need to tell the chair what I want. Second thing I want is, if we're putting money in the out years, I want it for turf, and I want it for Western Middle School. I do not want money going into the out years for grass at schools that really have marginal utility for our athletes. Okay? And I also tie that to health and safety, because no matter what contamination is in the ground, if you put turf down, it's an effective cap. So that's what I want, and I'll repeat it when we get to a vote.
Mr. Chair.
I guess I'm on the, if we already approved the capital plan, we already sent it forward, why are we just automatically shifting to let's go change our capital request? Why aren't we just pursuing the capital requests we already approved, given that we went through this long tortured process, particularly with fitting it into the capital plan and fitting it in? Why aren't we fighting for the plan that we, I just don't understand why we're so quick to toss this over the side.
Well, the, the feedback from the B E T was, pick a location, so that it is a known object. We have not done that.
Well, picking a location is different than changing the plan.
But they're open to what, what plan? Are you picking just a location? Are you still going with turf? Do you want to go with grass? Do you have another option? That is what the B E, B E T has asked us to do. The more information we give them, the better the result is going to be. Ms. Stone.
So just, sorry. So just that on there as well. So the $15 million, cool. We have $5 million that we are, to your point, we had asked for $5 million. That is now where they want to come back to us and say, very specifically, we want hypothetically, this money to be used in 2018, 2019 at said middle school, and we want it to be done with this sort of, with turf or whatever. More specifically, in order, when will we hear from K G and D? And will that be before the February 22nd meeting, such that we can get a little bit more information from them, to clear up any questions we have, field six and seven, re-carpeting that, as well as the middle schools?
Okay, so for field six and seven, you've had the town person who does the safety inspections on those. I'm sorry, I don't know everybody's name yet, I keep trying. Want to say it's Tim Coughlin, maybe? I almost gave the name wrong. Okay, but Tim has an external partner that comes and does these evaluations with him of all fields, who have clearly told him that not only are we beyond warranty on our carpets, but they are reaching the end of their useful life. He estimated, you know, whatever the months or duration, the concern the first selectman had, hearing from the public, hearing from public comments and, and all these different meetings, is that we are really going to be short if we, if somehow we fail a safety inspection on those. Didn't it make more sense to move that forward? That was some of the rationale for this. Some of it was balancing the overall town's capital budget with the, which the first selectman has the authority to put that forward, and the B E T has the authority to determine our capital cap, whether that's 35 million, or 45 million, or 10 million, or whatever it is. So they are exercising their correct authority despite what we might have approved or asked for. They do have that, that right to reduce, eliminate, modify the capital requests. So at least that's my understanding, being new and what I'm hearing. The other is, they want to tax people when they know it makes sense that the work is going to be done. They don't want it to hold over. So, you know, how much can we realistically get done between now and the end of the year? So if we know, in working with our environmental consultants, that best-case scenario, we've been working with Western remediation for a year and a half, apparently, you know, it may be another year before we have an accepted work plan. If that is the case, and we put in that 5.3 million and we allocate it to Western, and we are unable to do that, we lose that appropriation. It doesn't automatically go to Central or another site. So, you know, in being strategic, the first selectman is working with us, I believe, to try to be strategic in asking for exactly what we need and what we can get done in this amount of time. So if you would like to pursue Central Middle School as a field, you already know you have neighbors who do not support that early. They've told you early, they've told us early. We probably have sidewalk impacts and some other safety impacts that we did not build in to even our proposal. It doesn't have anything to do with fields, but it has to do with the site plan and getting through an approval process. So I'm trying to help you all be strategic. I'm trying to help give you the big picture with the master facility plan. I'm trying to help you build that case. I would love the fields to be done more than, maybe more than you. I've got my phone call complaint from my husband already. Yeah, I'm getting it. I'm getting it. Neighbors, no parent ever has to call and complain to me ever again, because I've got my own, you know, from afar, telling me what, what we need, including a field house, by the way. So we will figure out some way, you know, to get all this done. But, I mean, we can, you can proceed, Harvey wish to proceed as the Board of Ed. I will certainly be advocating for whatever it is that you'd like to keep doing, but I do believe, right now, we're hearing a pretty clear message on what the capital cap is in the town, and what they're willing to put into fields as a park, as a town board.
Ms. Wilson.
Dr. Gildea sort of mentioned it, but I, I think there were a lot of health and sa, health and safety concerns with the sidewalks. With, I don't, I don't think that we were necessarily, I didn't get sense we were necessarily on board with Central. I know that Central was mentioned as a possibility, and then it was Western for various reasons. Western, I, I think Western makes sense for various reasons in terms of how it, how it's laid out, get more practice fields there, where it is in terms of neighbors around it, congestion. So I don't, I don't, I don't think we got to that point where we said, yeah, that's, that's a good idea. So I just think, I think we need to keep an open mind. I definitely understand, I understand the frustration of the B E T saying the whole T B D and the entire town T B D, everyone saying which field, which field. And I think we need to move quickly, at least to say which field, because it's very frustrating for everybody to be in the not-know for such a long amount of time.
Ms. Stone.
Just sort of following that theme, the reality is that everything does take a while. And once you go through planning and zoning, and we actually plan everything through K G and D, and then get all the proper approvals, I suspect we are more likely going to have to go Jennifer's route in the next year, where we're going to have to rent fields. And so then, to that point, is that something we should be focusing on with the idea that we sort of analyze, and that is in the budget over the next year, where are we going to put this middle school field? Are we going to do multiple fields, as was suggested in K G and D? Are we going to do one, two, but that's then something that we can talk about and figure out over the next couple of months, but recognizing maybe more for the next football season, that we probably need to actually rent some of them.
Dr. Francis.
I feel like we've never really had a conversation to address any issues that the neighbors brought up. I think there's a number of things that people express as concerns that would be unlikely to actually come to fruition. And I think it is a little unfortunate that we didn't have maybe a more fleshed-out plan. Having had a lot of discussions through our school start time committee, you know, with athletics and with other people, but by the time the high school students would get there, I mean, they have to, I mean, believe me, I've learned so much about things I never thought I would, but, you know, they have to be dismissed, they have to get their tape on, they have to get all their equipment on, they have to do all these things. But by the time they would have done all that, you know, school would have been let out at Central. All that traffic would be gone. The, the middle school students would likely have already played their sports and be done by the time our kids would get there, you know, so that a lot of those concerns, you know, would not actually come to fruition. We also wouldn't be talking about doing this till very late hours. Even at, at the E T meeting, when they're talking about 9:00 P M, you know, we were not talking about 9:00 P M. We're talking about basically taking the same end time that you have in September, and just continuing it in end of October or November, not extending it till later. If the town wants to do that, then I think they have to fight for that. But from the school perspective, we're not talking about late nights. So there's a lot of things that, that were brought up that, that I don't think actually apply to what we would want to do. We also would be very unlikely to have three teams over there. They're talking about, you know, huge numbers of kids. We likely would be having one team go. So there was a lot of those concerns that we were never able to really, you know, respond to. And I think that is one thing in terms of plans or ways to approach. And certainly, if we were considering Central, which I still think we should, yes, I think taking into account meeting sidewalks, looking at other factors, considering, you know, a number of those things. But I think to say the neighbors were unhappy with a plan that was never understood, and giving up on it is not appropriate, because this is something clearly the principal, you know, the head of our athletics, our schools, our town, lots of other people want. And so I think we need to be a little bit stronger in understanding what the ask is, and making sure that we're not giving up on something we shouldn't be.
To date, it is my experience here that people are not coming out for what they want. They come out for what they don't want. And so I think that's probably an interesting insight for our community, is that I think we would have much more positive momentum and energy if people would speak about what they're for, and what they would like to see accomplished. And I think that would, would start us on a positive trajectory and momentum. I do think you've got a chicken and egg thing right now. You've got the B E T and our Board of Ed, of course, and our committee who wants the long-range plan. We need a little bit of patience to get through the long-range plan, and you need to build capacity with the board's understanding of the master facility plan, which Mrs. O'Donnell asked me today, when can I have time with the board, four to six hours to, with the architect, to go through this whole thing? And then build community collective, you know, understanding and capacity for that. Have B E T members involved from the beginning, have your town leaders involved from the beginning, and make sure every community members are aware of what this long-term plan is, so that you can actualize that plan. And make, and you know, just because the architect says three dirt fields, maybe that's what you want, maybe that's not what you want, but you do need the time to determine that, once you see the context of the big plan. I learned a lot from Joseph Leano at this last B E T, you know, when we had the fields break in the budget meeting, to say, we have thousands of hours that are already on the books for practices that we simply can't do throughout town. We need, you know, we have 26,000 hours of field space, we need 31,000, or something like that, to get everything currently on the books done. I mean, there's definitely an awareness, you know, that we need it, but it's got to be built into the context, I think, of this long-term master facility plan. And that's how I think the conversation went, and that's why I think it was phased out. I don't think it was meant to be, you know, negative against any of the ideas. I think it was meant as a, you know, let's propose the 300,000 for the A and E, that's very reasonable ask and very reasonable request, to be able to do the architecture and engineering of one of these fields. I hesitate to send you down the path of Western and then find out we don't get approvals, you know, through remediation planning, which is out of our control at DEEP and, and EPA. I hesitate to tell you to go, you know, focus on Central and then find out, you know, the neighbors just simply aren't in concurrence. So I'd like you to have, to build that collective will of the community, and then move forward. It's going to be a lot faster, ultimately.
So one thing I do want to point out, we, we need to decide the use case for the schools. These are not Parks and Rec fields until we are done with them. So we have to decide what it is. If the students at Central are on the, on the field until 5:00 P M, then they become available to the high school until X hour. If the town wants to light them beyond that, that's for Parks and Rec to go and fight. So we need to be very, I think we need to be as specific as we can at this point about what our true ask is, so that we know what it is we're, we're going to go and battle for. So I think, Dr. Francis, you had your hand up there.
One of the other things that I think we need to talk about is the fact that the 300,000 proposals specifically to go and look at grass. And I'm not, I'm not opposed, believe me, in a perfect world, I would love grass, right? I'm organic, kind of thing. I do all that stuff. But my understanding is that our teacher, I mean, our principals and our athletic directors, particularly for the high school sports, would prefer turf. So I think we need to be careful that we're not getting $300,000 to go and explore something that's not what we want. Now, if it turns out that we're fine with, you know, a nice grass field at Eastern, I don't object to that, but I want to make sure that that's what our principals and our athletic directors want, before we're spending $300,000 to go, you know, look at engineering for grass fields. The $300,000 to make the Central Middle School field work with, you know, sidewalks and things and so forth, I'm all for that, but I'm not sure whether we stand with your ass.
Mr. Chair.
I'm where Ms. Francis is. I mean, I guess there are good people, so I have to be patient with this, but we've lost the plot here. We know what our needs are. We don't need to wait for an end plan from the master plan. The master plan already informed us. Twenty-two meetings of a start time committee already informed us. Hearing from our athletic director month in and month out at the high school already informed this. This idea that there's information here that with open questions, not known, is strange to me, because all these discussions have been had. So I feel like we're having Groundhog Day. We know, and it brought it into stark relief recently with athletics, is we have insufficient athletic facilities at the high school to support our high school athletic programs. Our coaches have made clear what kind of facilities they need. They made very clear, I, certain sports cannot be played on grass, they need to be played on turf. So what's interesting to me is, we seem to be in this swirl conversation of all of these things that were the basis for what we already asked for, like they're all new questions to be answered. That, that's probably... probably, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me because so much time's already been spent on these things. I'm, I guess I'm where Ms. Dayton is. If we're not going to have these fields and we're not going to, we're going to take our foot off the gas, which is what we've done, to get these fields under any, or have a solution starting this next year, now we're done with that, I guess? So now we're into the following year? I don't need to talk about it anymore because then it's like, administration, you propose it, tell me when you're ready for the following year. It does bring it to stark relief though, then what is the plan starting October 1, 2018? So if we've taken our foot off the gas to solve our problems that we have in our program that we already have and they're known starting 2018, what is Plan B? So I'm okay with, we can go drop this field and we can visit it in 1920, I guess, which it seems to be the consensus is what I'm hearing here, although we probably have to flush that out. But it does say that, okay, fine. What is the plan? And by the way, now it's budget time. So additional money to rent fields is not capital. It's operating. So if we have to change our operating capital, our operating request, we ought to get our arms around that.
Totally.
And we ought to do it like lickety-split and it's got to come from the administration, Jill. It can't start with the board.
Anyone else?
Process-wise going forward, I, I think we will need to take a vote or a series of votes at our public meeting just so that we can give clear direction to the BET as to what we want to do. If that is a reaffirmation of the $5 million, so be it, but I, I think we need to do that to be very, very clear. I don't want there to be any outstanding question after we meet next. Does everybody agree with that process? Okay.
Ask about the process. Are we going to get a Plan B in conjunction with that? It seems to me doing that in isolation without having the other information probably isn't good decision-making.
Well, I think the superintendent is who are loud and clear, would like a proposal as to what it would cost to rent fields because I think that is the Plan B. If somebody else has some other information they want, now's the time to ask. Dr. Francis, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, I was just going to say, as we were, as I was thinking about this, I think a lot of the discussion that was, that happened about Central and the value of Central and the athletic component of it was done in the start time committee and was done last year. And so it may well be that other members of the board just haven't heard as much as Mr. Scher and I have. So that may be why we seem to be such strong components of it because I feel like that's what we heard from the administration during that process as our best solution in terms of a way to do it.
Ms. Depp.
Would we be able to see anything from KGND then before, from our 22nd? No, but with more detail, they're looking into the fields, I'm seeing more detail in the middle school fields.
So I don't know, I mean, you don't have a site plan at this point. You have drawings that were done, I want to say a year ago, for parks and rec that were $9,000 worth of drawings. I mean, they're not anything you could take to planning and zoning. So, you know, again, and it was basically to see what would fit. That's kind of what they did because they just, they had determined through parks and rec if we couldn't do something more than what we were already doing, or if we couldn't improve the sports we already had, you know, maybe you wanted to think about whether it was worth, you know, going through the investment of that. And as Russ has pointed out to the board and to the public, certain areas, he would not recommend just doing a square field. You know, he'd recommend maybe doing full turf, which I don't think the start time committee had necessarily ever talked about or thought about or considered.
I wouldn't support it.
So, right? So there's a lot of, still kind of some things that, yeah, it's easy to say, you know, he recommends a field at each middle school as a standard. He recommends it from a national perspective as a standard of what's happening across the nation for kids and athletics. He, you know, I put in my little, I put in my notes here that, you know, there's a lot of reasons for the turf with use, the northeast climate, the durability, the overall safety for the kids on those fields. And that it is an accepted standard even for youth sports. We've then got the space issues at certain sites. So he's considered that. We looked at elementary schools. Every one of them is too small, which surprised me because when you look at them to me, they look big. But apparently from the artificial turf world, they're not big enough to do what the kids would need to on those fields. So there's a lot of that assessment and analysis that's gone into it. So I, I mean, I think if the board has concurrence, that you would like to move forward with the concept of a turf field at each middle school. No, not necessarily. Okay. One turf field. One turf field. I mean, it helps for me to know if I'm going back and trying to look for, right, I'm trying to look for, you know, three. Anyway, what we had was maybe $9,000 worth of drawings. That's what Park and Rec had. It's not a site plan. It can't go to planning and zoning. It can't go to municipal improvement. It just doesn't fit.
And what we did learn from, from Mr. Justice Leano, what those drawings showed was at Central and Eastern, if you were going to put a regulation-sized field, you could not play any other sports. You'd use the field at the same time. Western is the only site that has multiple fields broken up. Dr. Francis.
I would say that, you know, one of the questions that I had asked when we were met on this vote for the, the capital was, you know, did we think we could be ready to get the turf at Central? I understand it's hard to predict how neighbors are going to respond to other things, but, you know, the answer was yes, we could be ready to do it. And so I am heartbroken to think that we're, we're yet going to go in another year without.
Not with the remediation though. I mean, not with the remediation needs. If there were no remediation there needs, oh, in Central, sorry, I heard Western. I heard Western, sorry.
Yeah, in Central. No, I understood, which is why I thought, we don't even think about Western. We don't know. But at Central, that, you know, that could be ready to be done this summer. So we would have that turf for our fall sports. And so I'm, I'm sad that we're going to scramble again for another year and that, you know, the town won't be there.
Ms. Depp.
Well, don't be too sad because while turf could get done, I don't know what's going to happen when we go for lights. We've already gone through a trial on that. So don't be too sad.
All right. Anybody else? So this will be an action item on our agenda for the 22nd. All right. Next up, summer school goals. Mr. Scher.
For those of you who have lost the plot on this one too, because it's so old and for the two new members who may not even know what this was, there have been in the board, year after year, conversations about summer school and its companion program, extended, extended school year program. There have been discussions about its costs, its focus, what it delivered in terms of results. There have been these every year conversations about the efficacy of this program. In order to make progress with this so that we didn't just keep repeating that conversation over and over again without effective conclusion, the board decided last, I guess it was April probably, to establish a subcommittee of the board, an ad hoc working committee. It had essentially whoever was willing to participate in it as membership. So it wound up with three voting members, a fourth member. It was Barbara O'Neil, Lauren Raven, myself, and Debbie Applebaum at the time participated in nearly every single meeting. Of course, with all committees, it was a joint committee including all of the people in the administration around the topic of summer school. The board was essentially asked the committee to go look at the current program, look at its current objectives, what it was supposed to be doing for us, take a look at how the program was performing. Also look at, there seemed to be some confusion about what our obligations are under the extended school year program. Different than a conversation about what you would want the extended school year program to do. So it took a task to essentially understand what it was that we had to do and then what it was that we wanted to do. The committee met three or four times. It's a while. And collectively, the administration and the board came up with essentially what you see here in this document. Essentially, we decided that we wanted to kind of reset the focus of summer school. There was a lot of discussion about whether programs should be more targeted versus what was essentially being the current design of the program, which was essentially almost like a full-year school. It was essentially taking the school and making it in, same program delivery, particularly in the elementary program during the summer. The board came away, the committee came away and said that we really wanted to focus on providing target interventions to make the program much more focused on kids and their individual challenges that they may be experiencing during the regular school year. Make the program much more focused versus broad. That's a discussion about what the program design is, particularly at the elementary level. Focus on closing, supporting and aligning it to what we're doing in the strategic plan with personalized learning and making sure that it was focused on the specific learning gaps that individual students may have. Also generally make it extended school year compliant. And then the last one, which was a little bit controversial, but the board, the committee adopted it, was essentially to make the program financially self-sustaining. That will have some implications when we think about a program design, whether or not that can be achieved or not. In terms of who the program target is, we align this to the work that you saw the other day in the discussion around our growth model, particularly understanding the relationship between proficiency, which is how kids perform in terms of what they know, and whether or not they're actually growing. We decided, and this needed to be refined by the administration, we decided we would leverage and select kids based upon data-driven from the ECLG growth model. And we would focus on kids particularly who were not achieving their growth propensity, but also focus on kids who were below proficiency. The, the program going forward should be focused in that area. There was work to be done by Mr. Dunn's organization, which I expect we'll see in the program design and the monitoring report, and that's presented, I guess, now in March. So that's been moved out a month. Just in terms of, then we broke it down because as you know, we have different issues, different program goals kind of for each level. At the elementary school, we decided that in addition to the universal summer school goals, there should be two goals that any program going forward, any program redesign should focus on. One is providing early literacy and intervention to support students to get them to read at grade level by grade three. So it's the focus primarily on K1 and 2. That's something the board has talked about for a long time. So that's something we really want the program to particularly focus on and have targeted interventions that do that as opposed to it just coming out of the generalized program. The other one is, is to provide program support to kids at grade five. As you know, many, many of the elementary schools in conjunction with the middle schools, some of them have a jump start program, so on and so forth. So we were looking to leverage this to make that more universally available to students in the elementary program if they wanted to participate in that and make it more systematic. In terms of the middle school, similar, reflecting the overall goals of the program, but also to focus on building academic skill and acceleration. That's helping those kids who might be at a particular level in the middle school, helping them through the summer program, put them in a position where they could move up a level. And particularly focus them as an example. A good, tangible example of that is, is all those kids that are not yet meeting goal of completing algebra by the end, algebra by the end of eighth grade. That would be an example of how the program design should be modified to help kids build additional academic skill and acceleration. The same is true to help kids provide a program that would help them bridge, particularly if they're in grade eight, be more prepared to participate in the high school, whether that be focusing on, additional focus on executive functioning, whatever it might wind up being. The last was a focus on a high school program and potentially changing the focus in the high school. The high school program has both enrichment, lots of enrichment in our curriculum, but it also has some remediation in its program design. It's focused particularly in those two areas. So what we decided to do was look at that program and in addition to the overall goals, ask it for a program design that focuses on expanding course offerings for credit recovery and remediation. And we had not set the percentage to help support that, those kids that were gapped in meeting graduation requirements. As you recall, last year when we were looking at that, that was a significant issue. We had, I forget how many, almost 100 kids who had not met our graduation requirements last year, 80?
Not, not, we didn't know about how many hadn't met the credit. That was the issues. Not the credit.
Right. But there was also some in support of the program goals that they may not be able to reach, the academic goals, the other academic testing goals, so on and so forth. There was a lot of discussion in the board, you might recall it. What supports are we providing to students to be able to do that? The last was, the second to last was to provide courses that enable kids to bridge, to successfully complete AP or honors coursework. This is a reflection of what you're seeing at summer school programs around the country, successful summer school programs around the country. They're now providing focused courses to kids who may not be participating in AP or not participating in honors level coursework to help them get a bridge so that at least they could take one, get to one course maybe in their next year by taking some kind of focused bridge capability during the summer and put them in a position to succeed in that. That fits, of course, to our strategic goal on measuring how many kids we can get into AP and how many kids we can get into AP of scoring a three or above. And then the last was looking at the course offering. Right now, there are some cases where this was fitting into essentially the stress discussion that was going on at the high school. Is there a way that we could use the summer program so that there are course offerings so that kids could take those classes, lighten their course load if they so chose during the regular school year by retiring core requirements and getting rid of those, like an English class that they might miss or some other cloud wellness class, so on and so forth, so that they can lighten their load during the school year. So these were the goals that the committee suggested. As I say, it came out of a lot of discussion with the administration. They're here for us to consider on whether or not we want to make these and adopt these as input to the superintendent. The superintendent thinks about how this program and her staff thinks about how this program should be done. The, the last part is, we did not complete the work on, well, let me just stop on summer school goals before I talk about E.S.Y. Are there any questions?
Dr. Francis.
I just want to say, I mean, I, on the number one for the high school, which was the meeting graduation requirements, while I don't think that was necessarily the issue in terms of what we saw last year, I completely agree that especially with the credits going up to 25 credits per year, that I didn't need to argue against point one. I was just clarifying the issue from last year. I think that's very helpful in terms of meeting the credit requirements.
Would you put a percentage, like we would then come to a decision? Because you said achieving, you didn't put a percentage yet for the last point on high school. What percentage we would want in the graduation requirements by the end?
Yeah, I, that was going to be, I mean, the timing, if you, I don't know if that makes sense. At that time, we had had a lot of discussion about graduation requirements. So it was kind of like an open air. I think we can have that. Now we need to think of it in the context of the change we've already made in graduation requirements. This was before graduation requirements. I don't know what our target is for kids. I don't think we have a target for kids. It's a hundred percent. Right? It's a hundred percent. But, you know, there were some instances as the Chris Winters and others educated, there's some kids who just won't make it for a variety of different reasons. So will we ever get to 100%? I don't know. The question is, what should that number be? Set that as a goal. I would suggest that we do that. We didn't talk about a specific target. Yeah. Other questions on, on summer school goals?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the committee for the work. It certainly is something that comes up every year. It certainly is something that comes up every year. We've been very interested in moving along in this discussion. Knowing, Dr. Gildea, I'm about to ask you a question, so you got any heads up? Knowing that we are going to hear, get a monitoring report on March 8th, has this been an input into what might be proposed for the future? Whether there's some of these things we can implement this year, some that are longer term? Whether you're going to do a deeper dive study, knowing you need some funding to do that?
Yes, as you know, through the budget process, we didn't put anything into the 18, 19 budget as part of a redesign officially, formally. However, we do have teachers working on targeted instruction, intervention kind of modules. So you're going to see some of that, that goal area addressed. The program administrators at the high school do need to work through number three, recommendation three in the high school level to see what is possible in the brief number of days that we have. You know, that's kind of the, it's not the whole summer, so it's hard to say. You could maybe do a whole year course right now. Not saying you, you know, you've got certain C requirements and things still. So yes, the work of the committee has informed what you will, what we will use as a guide as we are rebuilding, redesigning, reimagining. But it is going to take a then, you know, focused effort, a project to fully revamp or redesign if that's ultimately what is needed. You might find through targeted intensive classes, you're getting that gap closing the way you'd like and, you know, that may be sufficient. I think we're going to have to keep looking at the budget. So as we get through tuition and fees, you know, you'll see the, the challenge there in trying to meet your financial sustainability goal. Just the one change is, you know, has potential to cost you quite a bit. So you can look at all that in the big picture.
I have a question for Mr. Scher then, based on what Dr. Gildea said. Is it your proposal that at some point, next meeting or in the future, that we adopt some of these as actual board goals for the administration to go work on? Or are you content leaving it that we're going to hear at the monitoring report and maybe have a discussion after that?
The way this was originally designed, but you know, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I would think what the board would do is take this on. If the board liked the work of its committee, just adopt it, turn it over to the administration. And then, you know, the original idea was, when this came up, is we would do that and then they would do the program redesign whenever they do the program redesign, right? Everything's a little bit later than, but I, I would think the board would either say they like these or they want to change them or not. They would adopt them, dispose of it. I don't think there's any more work on the board's part that needs to be necessarily done. The only other topic we have talked about is E S Y, but that's separate. So that's what, that's the way I would envision it.
Ms. Damon?
So I'm providing initial feedback to you and to the others, of course. What I really like is meeting grad requirements. I like early literacy. I like early algebra. I like other bridges to advancement. So on the feedback that's less positive, I think there are conflicting objectives between financially self-sustaining versus getting students motivated to attend what sounds like an intervention program in the middle of their summer holidays. So that's one. Number two, the transitions programming, I think is best handled at local sites. Jump Start at EMS, Central already has something in the works as well with eighth graders paired to incoming sixth graders. So that just leaves Western. I really, I don't share your passion for making transitions happen in the summer in a centralized place. And I look forward to hearing more on E S Y. So I'll let you get on with that.
Just as a matter of clarification, Jennifer, if I left you with the impression that we're recommending there should be some centralized, no. This is, that's why you see the transition programs either at the elementary or the middle. There's no discussion of transition at a high school, which is centralized. So it's delivered, the idea would be it's delivered where, appropriately, wherever those programs are actually delivered. The point I think we were trying to get to is there seems to be inconsistencies based on which school you're in, what kind of support you get for transitions. So I think our committee is essentially saying, should this focus on transition or not? If it should, let's have it implemented in a consistent way. It seems since we're already running a program with certified teachers in summer school, rather than let's go create yet another separate program, it seemed to make sense to deliver that where we have all the infrastructure. We have all the teachers and what have you. But that's really up to the administration to decide how to do that. We were focused on the part of it not being available consistently and it not necessarily being available in a way that parents can plan for it.
Worked on the transitions problems as a PTA rep long ago. And what really matters there is not the teachers, it's the guidance counselors. It's the selection of courses. The transition planning with the guidance counselors is key. I don't see that happening in a summer program. So that's just one person's opinion.
All right, I do note we have some representatives from the middle schools in the back row that are listening in. Dr. Francis?
So I would say I agree with everything you said, including the the issues about how do you balance the financial with the things that we're trying to achieve? I guess when I read this, when I was talking about, when I was looking at the transition, I was assuming since it was summer school that that was talking more about academic issues. So preparing them for coursework. I think a lot of the schools have, there's so many components to transition. So I think at Western, they have a day where they go to like a, a camp day where they do like team building skills or something. So there are so many different components of that transition. Certainly you're not going to have the kids doing team building skills part of summer school at the high school someplace, completely unrelated. But if it was more of the academic component, I assume that could happen at any location. So I think we would probably want to clarify what we mean by that. I don't know if we're going to include, include those transitions. So I think we read that differently in terms of what it means. I had read it more as the academic, so they needed some brushing up on a course to be able to really succeed in the coursework that they had picked out. But this would be an academic component.
Ms. Raven?
And the transition part two, along the lines of academic, was things like executive functioning. So helping with like note taking, because then they were going to be changing classes, going from a single class in fifth grade to multiple classes in sixth grade, managing, you know, homework, the Cornell notes concept. So it was academic, but some of the executive functioning elements that we thought might benefit some students.
Other discussion? I guess you're sure you want to talk about E S Y now or do we want to?
Let me just quickly talk about E S Y, because we have to decide what we want to do with this. Just by way of background, there was a lot, because we're from numerous members of the board. It's come up, it's waxed, it's waned. It usually comes up when we're talking about money. Because we have a very big E S Y program, as you recall. And I would encourage you guys to go back and read. About the same time the board commissioned us, the board had gotten information about our special ed program, how many kids were in that program versus how many kids were then also in E S Y. Wax and wane. So one of the conversations was about this program. What is it we're currently doing that we need to do? What is it we're doing that's beyond that? That's a community values thing. Jill, you always talk about community values. What is it the community wants to do? One of the asks was to get a baseline. Part of the challenge is E S Y is largely driven out of federal law and federal regulations almost exclusively, which is helpful. The state of Connecticut compared to other states provides very little written guidance. They have one document and we've talked about one document on what it is a district is supposed to do vis a vis E S Y. You go look at other states, state of Colorado, they have full offices, they publish full guides. You can go read them. They're actually remarkably helpful and educational. What we did do is we went and talked to outside council, a couple of places, Shipman and Goodwin, did some initial work on this. We also talked to council at CAE, who took a look at this. So we had two different views of what our obligations were and are. We got two different answers. Okay? Well, Shipman and Goodwin had done work in this area, so they, for us, many, many years ago, so they had one kind of point of view. CAE had an entirely different point of view. We described what we were doing. They were completely puzzled. They said, that makes no sense to us. Anyway, it would have involved spending a considerable amount of money on legal fees, potentially five, 10, $15,000 to retain somebody to help us get to the bottom of that. So I paused. I took the work, I have the work that, the initial work that was done by Shipman and Goodwin. Can share that with the board if we'd like. The question is, how much more time did we want to spend on this? I didn't pursue it any further. I thought it was more important to get guidance from the board. This, of course, was a decision I made back in August or September, so it's become stale. Maybe it makes sense to circulate that work, take a look at it. And then if folks want to do any more with that, we can. If not, we can shove the subject. We just need to be aware that when it rolls around to budget time and the same question comes up about E S Y, we should probably be proactive or just be prepared to have the same old groundhog conversation every time it comes up. I, I don't know what people's appetite is to run this to ground and then what degree it's a priority at this point. Need guidance.
Dr. Francis?
This is not starting to answer, except maybe to clarify sort of where I was in terms of the thinking on this question, which was, I feel like we keep sort of saying that our summer school has to replicate that least restrictive environment. And it's supposed to be like what you get in the school year. But my calculation is if a lot of your students with special needs are going to go to summer school, then that would mean that you'd have to have a lot of your regular students if you're going to keep that ratio. And that to me doesn't seem like a reasonable goal. And I sort of felt like it would be nice to have a more realistic goal of what it is that we're looking for in terms of that ratio. You know, that we can say, okay, we think it should be X and we think this is a reasonable place to get, as opposed to sort of putting out there. It needs to be like the regular school year, which I don't see it could ever be. I don't know, I just, I mean, I don't think we're planning on doing year round school for all of our students. So it just, it just, I just felt like it would be nice for us to articulate a plan. And I didn't, that's not the meaning for it to be a big legal thing, but just as a district, what is it that we see as a reasonable plan?
Sure.
Gitan, that was one of the questions. And nearly everybody we talked to independently was very puzzled by our, our interpretation of L R E in that context. And they, you know, they all highlighted, you know, L R E obligations. This is why I have to figure out how much we care about having this conversation. L R E obligations during the school year versus L R E obligations during the summer school slash E S Y program are different. So it's, you raise that question, others have raised that question about the ratio and the costs associated with that. As I say, that's the difference between what's our obligation and what do we want to do as a community value? You know, it's a, we're on the ground. People have to decide how much they want to try to understand that so that they can make a policy decision. I, I will tell you, our committee didn't recommend a change. Nobody's recommending a change. We took the task as getting it so that everybody was all on the same sheet of music. And by the way, multiple members, even someone I hear now, he asked that question about ratio. You know, so that was one of the focus. And as I say, some of the people I, we talked to, they're like, you're doing what? And, you know, but then we have to decide if we want to spend any more energy on that question.
Ms. Damon?
So I don't want to spend energy on it. But to answer to Dr. Francis, it's not a terrible idea. It's just that I would not feel I was on safe legal ground to name a ratio since there seems to be ambiguity and different legal advice. So I'd rather just continue what we're doing than at least the board hasn't really made a mistake.
Dr. Francis?
Just, I need to clarify that it seemed like we had this constant goal to make it bigger and to try and get that ratio bigger. And so I sort of felt like, well, how much are we going to put into that goal? And should that be our primary goal? And at one point, it was our primary goal to make it bigger. So I just felt like that could be never ending. So maybe we don't ask for a specific cutoff, but maybe it's just not as bold. Our, our primary goal is not just to make it bigger.
Ms. O'Neil?
I think before we do anything in terms, we would evaluate what it is we have, how are the kids doing? Are, you know, then you can evaluate if you've got the right kids in the program or do we get too generous with inviting siblings and whatever? And then what's the cost? Yeah, I think you just need a little bit of context before we decide what we're going to do. And I think that's, that's the missing, missing part.
So I think we need this monitoring report, these things repaired. But anyway, so my suggestion would be let me circulate D S Y data that was had. You can decide when to schedule if you want the board to, you know, give this as formal advice to the administration. I think, I agree. I'm looking forward to hear. This for me, provided for members of the committee, I think will provide real context when we actually see the monitoring report. Because the questions, this will help inform the questions in the monitoring report, I think, for members of the board. I agree with Barbara that it's great to talk about it theoretically, you have to see it in the practical. The only hope I'm trying to make is, you know, we tend to do that around budget time, just, and then we forget, you know, and it comes back. So I think I just suggest circulating that stuff. Let's see the monitoring report and then you can decide if the board wants to do anything more with the, that would be my recommendation.
Well, I think that applies to the summer school goals as well. Let's see, let's see the monitoring report and then we can make a decision as to whether we want to do movement forward. All right, anybody else on this topic? All right, thank you, Mr. Scher for the reporting out. Next up is the middle school update and the Western middle school IB update. We invite our guests to come on down.
All right.
Ready to go?
Yes, I am.
All right, how about some order, folks?
So first of all, I'd like to welcome our guests this evening, Carrie and Suzanne from Western. Unfortunately, Gordon is not here. His mom died on Tuesday. So please keep him in your prayers and his family. And then we have Tom Healy and we have Gordon. No, I always do that, Ralph. I always do that. And then Gordon gets very upset with me. What can I say? It's only for a year and a half, you know? Got to call you a different name. Wow, that too. So we're really pleased to to give you an update, which you have in your board packet. And it's organized by the vision of the graduate capacities and the three goals of the district strategic plan, the academic, the personal, the interpersonal. It's not an achievement report, it's just an update. In October, you receive the district achievement report. And soon you'll be learning about the progress of performance with the monitoring reports of STEM and humanities. And you'll also be receiving from the state, the third annual next generation accountability report. So those are going to give you the performance updates and where we are. What we did do, including in the report, was to give you the aggregate data from last year for the three middle schools and also by grade. You receive that type of information. It was in the achievement report that was reviewed with you in September, October with Mr. Dunn. We did give you the STAR data from the fall administration so that you could see where the schools begin with their data that they get from their schools, their students, where they're performing. Currently, we are waiting for the winter administration of STAR. And Mr. Dunn tells us that he hopes that it can be in EQURO so we can find out are the students making progress towards their growth, which is set in the beginning of the year. So we're waiting for that. And as soon as we get that, then we'll be able to know if the strategies that we've put in place are going to really make a difference in where kids are going. We're going to share some of the work that the middle school administrators and their staff have been doing this year. They're utilizing various types of personalized learning strategies and building upon their past learning. They've done a lot of work with student reflection, student to teacher reflection. feedback, making sure that teachers give feedback to students, student-to-student feedback, so that they can learn collaboratively. We also know that they've been working with goal setting, data-driven decision-making, and that's with students as well as with teachers. The S T Ds use a lot of our district resources to support the work that they do in the schools. They use our consultants, CIPOL, C I O, research manager, and their colleagues to make sure that they are all on the same page. They have individual schools and individual cultures, but they all have the same standards that they're following, and we also make sure that we are following the strategic plan. So the academic, just to remind you, from our strategic plan, is to ensure each student achieves optimal growth within the core academic disciplines based on multiple variables. Personal, to ensure each student develops the capacity to be responsible for his or her own physical and mental health. And interpersonal, to ensure each student demonstrates growth and personal development and civic responsibility. And each school is going to take one of those sections to personalize it a little bit more for you so you know what's going on in the schools. There is collaboration among the school data team members and the administrators, and they also meet together during the, I think you meet once a week. They meet as an administrative team once a week, the three middle schools, and then they also meet with all of the administrators. I was in a meeting last week with all of them, and it's really pretty exciting to have all those people in the same room. So we've had a year and a half together to look at the data, tweak schedules, learn about new ways of scheduling, observing different innovation labs, performing arts, maker spacers, learning personalized, and we realize we really need to rethink what we're doing at our middle schools. Each school, as I said, has its own unique culture, brand, and school community. We've seen that what worked in the past is not necessarily working now in our middle schools. Are we really giving students what they're interested in or what they're curious about? Through inquiry, curiosity, new techniques, digital tools, and a new way of looking at the role of the teacher as facilitator, as well as the focus on student voice, choice, agency, pace, and interest, we need to begin planning for our next-generation schools and students. So what we'd like to do is moving forward is for us to explore and learn about the different concepts that have begun to excite our students and staff for the next-generation schools. Concepts such as a fine and performing arts school, innovation lab junior, STEM, design studio, mastery learning, project-based learning. We want to innovate from the inside out and develop programming to best meet the needs of our students. The three middle schools adapted their schedules slightly this year, and that's gained a positive support from parents, students, and staff. Middle school leadership will seek, well, actually, we're seeking your concurrence, that you'll let us explore various ways to support the work to be done and the professional learning that we need. We're excited to ask for your support of this recommendation based on the evidence that transformational actions in specific classrooms across our middle schools are yielding greater than anticipated results and should be replicated and fit our students here in Greenwich. So with that, I think I will let Tom start with Western. He actually is playing Gordon, I mean, no, he's going to play Western because Gordon was going to do Western, so that's why I have Suzanne and Carrie sitting next to him.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's right, for the last few years, I've been at both schools, I feel like in my mind, back and forth. But, and Carrie and Suzanne can jump at any point in time. So when we, when we discussed how we could provide you with an update and keep it focused on what our vision has been, is following strategic plan, realize three of us, three areas, makes sense. And with the report that Gordon had shared with you about a month or so ago and the fantastic growth that they're making, I guess we gave him or he took academic as a point of pride, which is reflective, I think, of the conversations that we're having and for him to have the opportunity to highlight the gains that they've made through similar processes that we've used at all three schools in using the E C R's portal, looking at individual students against themselves, looking at them over time through sixth grade through seventh grade and eighth grade, and taking the conversation on that focuses on what we have control over and not leaning on things that are beyond our control has really see, or make great results for our students, and Western was the greatest example of that. I think when we look at that in action, what it is, is looking at our current structures in place and seeing what we can offer within the current school day, both in traditional classes and then interventions that may last for a particular class time, as well as how we can use some of our more flexible time, like our advisor-based time or academic each day, for additional academic interventions, as well as extension and enrichment opportunities for kids. And that's the beauty for us in looking at the growth model is we now have an opportunity to look at every child across the board, see where they are, and figure out what it is that they need to meet or exceed their growth. So that is the conversation that we are continually having across all three middle schools. And as Dr. Caravilla said, the fact that it may look slightly different in each of the three middle schools is just reflective of the different students and the teachers and the capacities that we have in front of us.
Do you have anything that you'd like to add about Western?
All right, Dr. Caravilla, I think we have a question. Dr. Francis.
I don't know how you want to do this, but I did have just a little question about the, you said academics, about the scores. This is for everybody. I just didn't really understand, so I assumed when I first read it that the year stuff was year for E C R, one year for the next. The fall one, what are you?
Is just the STAR data. That's just the STAR data where students started out.
But what is the growth from?
The growth will, is set from E C R. This is where Mr. Dunn can explain E C R to you.
No, I guess, but I thought that was STAR. If you're looking at just STAR for the fall?
They are looking at STAR, and when they look at the STAR data in the fall, Mr. Dunn.
When you're looking at the fall STAR, is, are you looking at from spring to fall or from fall to fall? What's the interval?
So for each administration of the, of a benchmark assessment, we compute growth metrics. So for the fall, when we take a baseline, what is an effective baseline measure? We're looking back at the spring to measure growth from the spring of the penultimate school year to the fall.
So some of that's, you're looking at summer slide.
That's where, you could use that to approximate, yeah.
That is why, and the scores in the bar. Well, it's first part valid, but not for you.
I think just, just to respond again, in terms of our end, that is a concern of ours. It's a conversation that we've had, how much of this is, it's not always easy to tease that out. But again, knowing where we start in the fall and where we're going, it's worth, it's worth keeping. But yes, we've had that conversation.
Ms. Raven.
I was going to wait till the end, but since Dr. Francis asked, can you just explain, and I'm sorry I don't remember this from October, the legend as to, you know, what is the range for higher, expected, lower, and unsatisfactory? There's a top number that says overall growth, negative point oh six, expected growth. Is that just the, like, okay? And then that's on page two, I guess, for example, two of the fourteen. And then on page five of ten, so they're kind of like in a weird order. High growth for grades six, seven, eight, there's the digit one, like, is, what is that? And then low growth, digit two, one, two, like, I didn't understand that.
Phil, those are the, when the reports are reported out with the rivers, and then there's the standard deviation above, the standard deviation below. And then if, if the benchmark is, say, let's say it's fourteen, just for talking about it, and it's in the river where we want kids to be, there's a certain area that we want kids to be able to perform in. If they are performing at their benchmark, then they're, they are performing at the expected. If they go a little bit higher, a couple of points higher than what the score was, then they're like a plus point zero two. If they're just below that score, then they're like a minus point zero two. If they're one standard deviation below the benchmark, then it would be a negative zero point one. And if they're above, then it's a positive zero point one.
I think that's what you're asking. I think there's an issue that your percentages don't add up to a hundred. Your percent high growth is one each.
Yeah, maybe we can get updated in charge just to push it on more docs. Ms. Tate.
That definitely is a typo. Thank you.
Ms. Tate.
I love the collaborative work, your weekly meetings, sharing best practices. I also love that you've assigned one principle each of the goals in the strategic plan. That's brilliant. I want to talk about the academic goal. So when I read the strategic plan, to me, it says, we're trying to move students out of the low-growth category. They should either meet expected growth or they should exceed expected growth. When we had a brief discussion of a middle school review in quotes, we had talked about block scheduling as a way for us to provide the time for interventions. We didn't put money in the budget to change the scheduling. I want to hear from you on block scheduling. Also, I understand that enrollment has increased in our middle schools, which leads me to believe that maybe the teaming concept isn't as urgent anymore. It is still urgent? Oh, sorry. Tell me about block scheduling.
So I'm representing Western again. So this year, and Suzanne and Carrie may be able to speak a little bit more specifically, but I, we spoke about it, and we looked at it actually at our meeting altogether last week. But Western's increase in enrollment, which subsequent increase in staffing that came along with it, has allowed them to actually make a, basically a rotating drop block schedule for next year that we are unable to do based on the staffing that we have. It's not enough to create the language arts sections and double block seventh and eighth grade language arts, which is really the cog in the wheel that creates the whole situation. So it is being done where it is able to be done, based on the model that we have. It's, it's an interesting, basically, plan that they have in place which does actually create what is now being called sort of an auxiliary block, which could be used when teachers don't need to as sort of duties, but then also when they do, meet with children or create other opportunities for academic advancements, enrichments, remediation, whatever the case might be. So it's in the planning stages still, but basically, the enrollment increase at Western has allowed them to explore that option.
And I think the idea of that rotating block is something that teachers really are excited about because it allows them to see kids at different times of the day, not always at the same period, which is difficult. And we're also really excited about taking what we normally do right now in advisor base, our community service, all of our different kind of opportunities for kids and building an auxiliary period. Allow them, we think allowing for more opportunities to do that, while also allowing us to have a, right now, we have a Monday, it's our Monday S E L day in A B, allowing us to have a Monday schedule to still allow that to happen. So it's consistent and it's kind of our goal and we have to do it, but then allowing the flexibility on the other days. So we'll be the beginning fix. We're excited to be the beginning fix.
Mr. Scher. Can you just explain what you just said about teachers wanting to see kids at different times of the day?
I think there's always, you know, you teach seventh period. You're the last class of the day. Math, the student's worst subject. And to see them every day, seventh period at the end of the day is sometimes really difficult for kids. So the idea of being able to see those same groups of students right after lunch instead of like before lunch or at the start of the day versus at the end of the day is just something that is, you know, enticing to teachers.
Is that because they're what, they're tired or what?
I think it's an assortment, yeah. Could be that they are, they had lunch at ten forty-nine, and it's now they're hungry at the end of the day. Their attention, they're, you know, so there's a variety of reasons.
Living in the corporate world with a schedule that has repeating meetings, I completely get the concept. Ms. Wilson.
I mean, I can just speak on that with experience in the classroom. It depends. I mean, you will see a completely different child first period when they're maybe not awake yet versus right after lunch, blood sugar drops, hyper, it depends, so many components. And you never really, any of the teacher has the kids right after lunch or at the end of the day. So you can accomplish a lot more in the classroom depending on if you vary the time that you see them. It makes a big difference. You're going to be much more effective in terms of educating them.
Ms. O'Neil.
So when you developed this, what was the goal and what kind of data are you going, are you collecting to see if this is meeting the goal that you anticipated? Or did you have a goal? And are you doing it at Eastern?
So again, speaking to the conversation that I had had with all of us together with Gordon, the original goal for the schedule was sort of twofold, which was, one, to create more opportunities within the school day for students to have access to what they need or what they would want, whether that is needing remediation opportunities or whether that's wanting enrichment opportunities. It actually kind of started from the conversation of, based on our schedule and our offerings, not all kids can actually take all of the electives that they would like to or even should be exposed to. So that started that conversation. And the schedule does create a situation where kids are going to be able to have more flexibility in their schedule to enroll in additional elective classes. The other thing that it does by double blocking your language arts in seventh and eighth grade is it ensures that the teams can meet consistently as they rotate through. One of the issues that we have in our pattern basis in seventh and eighth grade, having a period and a half of language arts every other day, is that when trying to team, their writing block has to fall in the time when the kids are in exploratory classes. And so you're really looking at a language arts teacher only being available every other day for team meetings as opposed to more consistently. So this schedule should actually allow full teams to meet around their students more consistently.
Well, at Eastern this year, we changed our schedule pretty dramatically to do pretty much the same, reach the same goal that Gordon's trying to reach at Western. One of the things that happened, though, that, you know, threw a monkey in the wrench, as we used to say, is that because we, our moment went to eight forty, it was eight fifty at one point, we weren't able to team anymore, and that was not helpful. But we have more of a pure team in sixth grade. So what we did was we put the first three periods of the day together, and we're trying to work with the teachers to do a little bit of flex scheduling at that, during that time period, which adjusts the sixth graders to see if how that worked for us and worked for our other kids in the building. So we're getting a consultant to come down. We found one up in, at Keene State University to come down and help us to teach the teachers how to use flex scheduling. And I was just at a school doing a school assessment for the New England League of Middle Schools right next door to us, Stanford Schofield Middle School, and they actually do it there. And it really works for kids that need additional support during the school day. Because kids are, you know, when kids come in at seven thirty in the morning to get some additional support, they're not really ready, and then the afternoon, they want to go. They want to go and do their sports, do their clubs, do their activity. So we're trying to get that additional support built into the day through flexible schedule.
So, Mr. Healy, before I get into this, are you just waiting to see which one works better or do you have a plan?
Yes. Actually, I'm very excited to see what happens with the Western model because I feel like one frustration that we have really is that limitation of our scheduling and our inability to have teams meet consistently. Central has had the issue, the opposite issue, and I guess it's really my issue because as I left Western, they were increasing and getting more staff, and as I came to Central, they were decreasing, getting less staff. So I'm kind of faced on the other end where I'm, I'm less where we were prior to me being there. And so I would love to have an opportunity to figure out how we can do something that allows greater flexibility to get kids what they want and what they need. And what we have right now, I would say, it's not as perhaps purposeful as Ralph's model at Eastern, but what we've been seeing a lot of is this year, we've seen a lot more interdisciplinary connections among our teachers. And what they're actually doing is they're looking at when they happen to have classes running at the same time and signing out the media center or bringing them to another room or sending this group of students across the hall to that teacher and having the other room, or sending this group of students across the hall to that teacher and having the other teacher bring them in. So even though there are restrictions in place, the teachers are looking to make this kind of change. And once we are able to explore it in a more systematic way, I would be definitely interested to see kind of which way is benefiting kids most.
Great. Ms. Tate?
I'm one of eight people, but I'd like that to be a formal study. I'd like to know if the Western model works or not. And I'd like you to come to the board with a budget recommendation if it does work. Second, Ralph mentioned Schofield Middle School with the double blocks. That school's high-need students outperformed the entire district of Stanford Public Schools. Okay? So something's working. The last thing is, just a personal viewpoint, I'd like to see double-block math more than I'd like to see double-block language arts for performance reasons. And this won't go over well with Mary Ford, but I would really not like to use the time for social and emotional learning, but rather for academic learning, if at all possible. Other people here may feel that that's the most important thing, so I'm only speaking for myself.
Ms. Sher.
I totally agree. You know, as long as we have kids who are, particularly in mathematics, sufficiently, you know, there are some of these classes, I don't want to pick them, anyone's school, but you can go look up the numbers yourself, you know, even though we're getting growth, that's great, but we got kids who are below proficiency. So long as that is occurring, that has to come, I mean, this is not peanut butter, right? We're not trying to spread it evenly on the piece of bread. It's gotta be, you know, if I've got a lump of peanut butter, apply it where I can get the most bang for the buck. Because if we just thin this thing out a little bit to social-emotional line, a little bit to English, a little bit to humanities, a little bit to this, that's not enough impact to move the needle. So I would, I would share your same view. If there's time, it's gotta be targeted towards something where it'll have enough that an impact.
Well, you know, I think that you brought up an excellent point. Schofield does outperform every other middle school in Stanford. And the reason that they do, I think, from my perspective, I've done three visits there in the last nine years. My children went to school there. And then they came to Greenwich High School and were well-prepared. They team, folks. And if we can get teaming, which means more staff, but if we can get to teaming, we would perform like we should, rather than, and then we would have teachers connected to kids the way they should be, not the way it is right now.
Just to go back to that point, I think that that's actually the bigger conversation. So I referenced the double-blocking language arts because that's the way our schedule runs right now. But what I learned, being a new administrator in middle school and having consultants come in and talk to us about our schedule, is what you have to start with is minutes. So I think once we start looking at, relooking at how we actually schedule our classes, when we would look at the amount of minutes we want kids to have certain subject areas, that would be the model we're looking forward to. Western just happens to be kind of moving the needle under the same sort of structure that we have, but that is where we want to go. We've always talked about what are the minutes per day students should have certain subject matter and not think about it in terms of periods per day.
And just to make it even more confusing, my point of view is that if we could have teams and flexible scheduling, then the teachers can decide how many minutes the children need for math, how many they need for science, how, they make the decisions on a weekly basis, how they're going to run their schedule. We don't have to, we don't have to make that decision for them. They can do it. But that's going to take, you know, it's a long road to get to that, that point. It's going to take some training and a lot of work. So, but that's my perspective on what a quality middle school would look like.
Ms. Stowe?
So if I could just ask Jill, does that mean that there would be an opportunity where you would say, "This child actually requires more math than this child requires more language arts and that's why I'm a personalized learning staff"? The team allows you to go that direction?
Yes, we're in concurrence on that. So research shows, you know, if you're behind, what do you need? More time, right? And some kids zoom right ahead. They don't need the 58-minute high school period, right? They're bored. So you gotta find a way to flex the time that you have with them so that you move them at their pace and rate. But you do have to find a way to do that. And right now, you know, in administrative school back in the day, you kind of learned about being banned in buses, right? So you had to build your schedule around lunchtime because you have a certain legal timeline that you have to do lunch, and around your specials, your ban, and your buses, your transportation system, right? So those are sometimes drivers. But the more flexibility you can get to the educators who know their children and know what they need, the more you can, you know, get the gains out of them because you know how much time you need them in small group, how much time in seminar, how much time in individual support, and what they could do in whole group. So I think that's, I think we're all speaking to the same, you know, that same kind of thought.
So now, Mr. Mayo?
I think we had a board question. Ms. Wilson?
No, I know.
You're trying to move it along.
No, I'm just, I'm really excited about what these are doing and I'm excited to see how it works. So just to clarify, you said with academic enrichment, that if some kids need academic enrichment, then other students might be doing like extra time with an elective or an advanced, like doubling into something deeper, which is pretty cool. I like that idea. Teams are, I worked in middle school for years, teams are really important. Communication is the most important thing. All of a sudden, these children have all these different teachers and that's, teams will save a middle school in my book. So that's something that I fully support, if we can make that work and keep that at the center of it all. With double blocks, I think that also we need to look at the fact that sometimes certain subjects lend themselves to double blocks. Sometimes double blocks are better for certain subjects than others. I mean, I understand that it depends on the particular student's needs, that they may need extra time in math or an extra, extra academic support. However, I know certain, certain subject matters, like an ELA course, it's nice to have that long block for a writing assignment without interruption, whereas math, foreign language, for certain languages, it's better to have repetition more frequency at shorter lengths of time. So I think that needs to be looked at as well, not just, okay, this child's suffering, having trouble in math, let's give them this 80-minute period of math, that's not going to do anything. So just to be cognizant, and we probably already are, going into it, like if somebody needs math enrichment, the double block doesn't mean all at once. You break it up so that it fits their needs best, just to point that out there.
All right. I think you're trying to move on to the next topic.
I am. And I know Mr. Mayo's going to be disappointed because I'm calling him Mr. Mayo, not Mr. Feinstein, but he's going to do the personal goal for the middle schools.
Thanks, Ian. Anyway, the personal goals, we took a look at our panorama survey results that came in, I think it was July, and we looked at them and we didn't like what we saw. So we developed, all three middle schools developed our personal goals based on those survey results. We didn't like what we were hearing about our climate. We didn't like what we saw about students being connected to adults in the building. We didn't like a lot of that. So in our school improvement plans, we put in a number of actions where we would try to make some gains in those areas, try to connect our kids in a better manner, try and, actually, our parents were even questioning the fact that we were not listening to them. We're not taking any of their suggestions. So we put all that in our school improvement plans to help us move forward. For the kids specifically, through advisor base and through our second step program, we're working with them on the social-emotional learning component and helping them connect with their peers, helping them connect with their teachers. And, you know, our goal, our goal is to have engaged, productive citizens at the end of the, that 12th grade year. And it's hard for us to see that goal in middle school, but, you know, having worked at the high school for, Greenwich High School for 27 years and watched kids go across those platforms, we do a pretty good job, but we felt that we were, you know, we didn't have good results from that survey, so we needed to really go after this one pretty hard. And I think we are. Also, in, not just in advisor base, but going back to personalized learning and self-reflection and self-assessment, the students are getting a, know their futures a lot better because they're doing a lot of that self-assessment and they're working with their teachers in one-on-one sessions during academic time and developing goals, both the academic goals and social-emotional goals. So we're going to get to measure that again in the spring. We're going to, we're going to put out our own surveys and measure it again. And our, I believe, all three schools, their school improvement teams are going to develop those surveys. So we'll have student questions, we'll have parent questions, we'll have faculty questions. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. O'Neil?
Would the results of the survey that you gave share with parents?
We, I, I'm not sure about, yeah, okay. So all three schools shared the results. I don't know if they did it in similar ways. We had a meeting, we asked, we sent out invitations to our entire parent community. We brought them in, we went through the entire, we didn't go through the entire survey, we went through the pieces that we thought were really low and really important for us to address. And we posted our, the entire survey results on our website so that if they wanted to go back and look at the entire survey and all the results they could.
All schools at the, at, over the year have gone over their panorama surveys with their parents, with their teachers, and some of the schools have actually used some of the results with their student council where it was appropriate for the student council body to set the goals that they thought would be important from the information that they learned. So that was something that all of the schools did. And now, Mr. Healy gets to be the principal at Central Middle School, and from his perspective, share what they do in the interpersonal goals, which all of the middle schools actually do.
So the interpersonal goals, really, we focus a lot on helping our students understand what their goal is as a citizen in a school community and then in the wider community. So in looking at sixth grade with an increased level of independence from elementary school, what does it mean to be sort of a citizen in this, in this environment? What does it mean to be a part of this particular school? Moving into seventh grade where we're looking more at instilling leadership-type qualities in students and how they're starting to emerge as role models, might for the younger kids and then take on a little bit more responsibility. And then by eighth grade, they have the opportunity to really start to propose action to take in their community. And the Capstone Project really, or Capstone Experience really does a great job in helping us build toward that in a structured way. So what we really captured sort of here in this update is all of the different community service activities that are going on, the work of our student councils, the work of other groups that we may have, both the Avid Program at Western and at Central have a large community service component for their students. And all of the aspects that lead up to students finding what they care about in their local community, understanding how to research what problem may exist or issue may exist that they want to address. And then the resulting Capstone is really emphasizing more so now than ever before, how you take action on something. And that is really truly becoming a citizen and connected to your community, to others in your local community, both at the school and town level and beyond. So that was really what we tried to highlight here. And also, in looking at the capacities, the vision of graduate fall and interpersonal capacities, obviously, a lot of what goes on in the classroom from collaborative work, presentation skills, communicating, your thinking, are all embedded in just their good instructional strategies, where we're moving from, or we're moving toward a more student-centered learning environment. How do we create the conditions to put the learning onto the students? How do we then teach them how to interact with each other appropriately, how to debate, how to develop ideas, extend upon and build upon other ideas, listen to different perspectives, and share those in a respectful way where we can learn from each other? So this kind of captures both what's going on academically in the classroom, as well as really the more larger, community-based lessons that are being sort of taught and experiences that kids are having through the school.
Questions out to you first of all.
So I think that you can see that the goals that you chose for a strategic plan, the academic, the personal, and the interpersonal, they really all connect with one another. And it's not that one is more important than the other. They're all engaged in every single piece, and your personal, your interpersonal, and your academic, they're in and out. So it's really pretty amazing when you think about what our administrators and teachers are able to do. But the more exciting thing is to see what the students are doing and what they're learning about themselves and the experiences that they're having. And that's the exciting part about being in a middle school. I am one of those middle school crazy people, but it really is pretty exciting. And I've taught at all grade levels from preschool all the way to graduate-level college courses. And middle school is just that wonderful place where kids finally start to figure out who they are. So it's really pretty exciting. And I think that as we move forward, we're really looking forward to becoming the next generation of middle schools, and that's what we want to leave you with.
So I think the other part of this was a IB update. Ms. Stowe?
Sorry, I have such a basic question after that beautiful close. Which is, is this just a misprint or did 100 fewer children take reading tests at such a middle school?
Which page are you looking at? Page two of this slide.
Is it possible people, okay, so just, okay, maybe it's possibly all opted out of that or something.
Probably.
There's no opt-in. Oh, there's no opt-in? Okay. Got it.
So the other portion of this was a update on the Western Middle School IB. So think Gordon, I don't know if you want to talk to her, really turn to the real team. Or do you want to defer this until Ms. May sees it?
Actually, I think that Dr. Gilde has some thoughts about that. And having, we've had many conversations with Gordon about the IB program and about how it fits in today with what we're thinking of for the future.
Dr. Gilde?
All right. So one of the recommendations that surfaced through conversations with middle school leaders, but in particular at Western, which is currently labeled an IB middle school, it would be up for revamping this year. As you know, IB middle years program actually goes from sixth until 10th grade. High school doesn't have it though, so our kids only get whatever, 60% of that experience if they sign in on that. We love the idea of the concept of rebranding Western Middle School's magnet as Innovation Lab Junior, which would capture all those things we talked about this evening, would provide that targeted, project-based learning with that design studio kind of experience that we discussed. Of course, Central wants to take on that challenge as well. They're not sure, they really want to let Western in and of itself be an innovation lab center. But obviously, this would be a prototype for schools of the future, and that is the recommendation for the board's consideration.
Sue, would there be a formal proposal coming, a project plan? And is this a pilot or is this a actual change?
This would be a project plan that would come to you.
Would this be a whole school change or would this be a subset?
And nod. Ms. Sher?
Great idea. Trouble is, it's in isolation. You know, and maybe we've lost the thread on, Western became an IB school because there were a bunch of IB parents who say, "I can't go any further. It was supposed to be an IB magnet." You know, the idea was, is that we would draw off all these kids who were, you know, continuing from IB at Dundee. That didn't work. You know, so I, you have to understand that school and its programming had this element of all of this, the racial balance morass. So I just think if you come back with that, you know, different theme, it, it raises these whole questions, which is, what is the purpose of doing that? What is it supposed to achieve? And then it raises, the bigger question is, do we want, and I don't know the answer to this, you know, it's all new board from when these decisions were made, do we want to have completely different themes and programmings at different middle schools? You know, do we want to do that? And there's lots of arguments about why that would be good. There's equal arguments that say, well, as long as we have a system where you're assigned and, you know, it, my point is, Jill, however you answer that, it has to be answered in a light My point is, Jill, however you answer that, it has to be answered in a wider context, not just in isolation, because we can get excited about a singular idea, but we've got to think of it in a whole policy environment that it's sitting in. And I realize that a lot of people don't understand, you know, how do you even want to put that in the first place? Not that it matters, I mean, we can revisit any decision we make, but it should have that strategic, complete holistic and strategic context if that proposal were to come forward.
Good feedback.
Other comments and thoughts? Mr. Neal.
So, has any other themes or ideas been explored in addition to an Innovation Lab Junior? And then, when would this change, when do you anticipate this change taking place?
As early as fall. It would take, it would take a while, because we want to make sure that we explore different options and making sure that these are the things that are going to get us ready for the next generation schools. I know that Stanford has done a total redesign of their middle schools. I'd like for us to go and visit them and see, what are they doing? Are they ready for the next generation of students in schools? Are they ready for the next level of what we're gonna do with digital learning and tools and personalized learning? So, I think it's something that we can, we don't have an absolute idea right now, but I think that we've seen so many changes occurring over the past year and a half and positive outcomes from what's going on at Eastern and at Central and Western. We have a long way to go, but the climates in those buildings are just so positive and the kids are so excited about what they're doing, as are the teachers, that I think this is the time for us to really have that opportunity to explore, see what we can find. But it's not going to be something that is going to be a short term. It's going to take time to research, to examine, and then come back to you and say, "These are the things that we've discovered, and we think based on the community at Western, and based on the community at Central, or based on the community at Eastern, these are the areas and the brands that we'd really like to pursue." And each school, we still have to follow the standards, that never goes away, never goes away following the curriculum that we've built. But it's just the themes around it and how we could deliver that. So, it's gonna take a while.
It takes a long while to research it.
Ms. Raven for a break.
Sorry, Barbara. I think we're supposed to extend the meeting. So, I'll make a motion to extend the meet. But then you don't have to vote. Extend the meeting, we didn't adopt our new policies yet. Extend the meeting until 10:00.
Second, second from Miss Dayton. All those in favor, Miss Dayton, all those in favor of extending the meeting until 10:00 and no further. It's your.
So, those last 15 minutes don't count?
The clock is broken. Miss Dayton.
I would just ask that, whatever you do, that you differentiate Western Middle School's theme from all the other schools. Because if there's no magnetic effect, it's gonna catch up to us and we will have regrets later. So, very basic advice.
And I guess I've got the practical question. When is our IB program expiring? And what does that mean in the interim until the plan is formulated and then implemented?
Right. So, IB is up this year. So, that's up for an external review. And you would, our IB coordinator at the middle school left the first day of school. He was, must have been recruited, I'm guessing. So, that has not been replaced. But the person, we would need to be looking at a real redesign of what's currently happening in our middle school, you know, reimagination. Because if you really want to have IB, you need a different report card, you need technology classes that are kind of antiquated, to be honest, because the kids have one-to-one devices. You need to have no levels, no leveling. I heard chuckling, no leveling. And world language, I believe.
Yes, every child. Vertical teaming.
Vertical teaming on that. So, all of that stuff would have to be in place to score at a point that you could continue anyway. Right now, you can't have a way to do that.
We also have a fee for the evaluation, and I believe that's in the $5,000 area, just to have them come out and look and make that observation and give us feedback.
So, the follow-up then, if we do live, expires, what do we do in the interim?
So, that's why what you're doing in the interim is beginning that, we've already begun the work, but it's basically solidifying your project plan to be able to launch your innovation center at Western.
Dr. Francis.
Doesn't preclude us from still saying it's a magnet school in terms of people being able to go there. So, they might just say, "Based on the great academic growth, I want my kid to go there," even though it's not necessarily IB. Is that correct? So, we don't necessarily lose the ability to have people want to go there.
You've had 15 children magnet into the school since you've had the theme, 12 of them are educators' children.
I'm sorry, that was actually not my question.
You know, that's, that's your facts. That's your facts. So, I think you're okay to rebrand. I think it's, I think Innovation Lab Junior makes sense simply because it matches everything you've just told us tonight, all them told us. And it is a model that we understand how to put into place based on what we're seeing at the high school. So, you're having math, science, STEM, you're having language arts humanities, you're having a design period elective. It's great when you introduce the concept.
So, my follow-up would simply be that, I think, to caution that, to try and do that quickly. I mean, I think those, the educators at the high school put a huge amount of effort into really figuring out how they're gonna do those lessons, how they're gonna make them even, or how they're gonna really make that work. And in some ways, you walk in there and maybe it looks easy, but I think there's been a huge amount of effort going into that. And to do that for a whole school, for all different classes, for all different levels, for all different things, I would just caution, if we really want to make this work, let's not rush it either.
We've talked about that, and we've talked about the professional learning needed, but also, middle school design, if you're truly doing middle school, is linked to that type of work. Yeah?
Mrs. Scher.
You could continue to do IB, just not be certified, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, there's this, whether, I mean, I have no affinity for IB, you know, in particular. I think, but I agree with, I think, Dr. Gildea and I agree with Mrs. O'Neill. I'm worried, we wound up with IB there because it was the hot book thing at the time, okay? And I would rather, Jill, that we pause, because we're, again, this is how we lose the plot, right? Our objective is to go to true personalized learning. That is the goal. Not take programmatic things and then spread on, you know, like, "Hey, it's green." It's, I love the one with Duracell batteries where 3% of them can be recycled, therefore the batteries are green. I don't want us to do that. What I want us to do is focus on what does personalized learning ultimately look like? And if we're gonna take a school and take out its program and replace it with something else, I would rather it's completely focused on getting us to whatever our ultimate vision is, which I think is still murky, on what personalized learning looks like. If Innovation Lab is what that ultimately looks like, great. I worry about this, now let's go jump to Lab, Innovation Lab, because it's kind of in that thematic realm of what personalized learning and next generation might look like. I would just signal right now, that would be not, if that were the way it were presented, I couldn't get behind that. I would rather we're talking about, and we've also had this conversation, I think we made a mistake. The mistake that we've made in this district is, we, I participated in that, we have not found the balance between how do we deliver things consistently for kids across the district, and then how do we deliver programs that fit to the needs? I, you know, I think there's an elementary school where we picked a program that was totally out of step with best practices if you looked at the majority of the population in the school, how to raise them up academically. I would rather that we go look at Western as an example. Think about personalized learning, think about all the models that are available to us that are consistent with personalized learning, and pick the very best one that could put rocket fuel on what is already happening in that school to get Western, to get those kids to the highest level of proficiency that they can get. And I would hope we would, that's gonna take a little bit of time. I like what you're saying is, you know, I want to go fast, but I want to go smart. I worry about a discussion that says, "As early as September," that sounds way too quick to me.
Mr. Neal.
So, we say Innovation Lab is successful, but I'm not sure we have the data for that. I'm not doubting it, but I think to believe it, and to certainly believe that we need to have data, and so to make this jump that the middle school, a whole school makes this leap because it looks good at the high school, I'd much rather see some data and Innovation Lab at high school hasn't existed that long and itself has evolved over the years to different, to a different format. The other thing I'd be concerned about with the magnet school issue at Western is, does this impact our racial balance plan, that they are one of our magnets? So, I don't know. I'm not thrilled at jumping into another, another theme. I'm not sure that West, that IB was given a fair shake at Western. And so, to jump to something else doesn't sit up.
I think if you'd like to reimagine the school as IB though, then we'd really have to do it. Then you really have to do it, and you gotta take, put this drug, you've gotta take away this.
Can I just reimagine? I should be thoughtful about it.
I was responding to this.
I'm totally ready to reimagine.
So, and I think we have to encourage the administrators, the leaders that are here just in that way.
Yeah.
Because I do think they're on exactly the right trajectory to do that. And I think from, you know, everything you've heard, from teaming to the time, to the whole child, however you want to define that, academic, interpersonal, personal capacity building, you know, it starts, it goes K-12. And right now, we kind of match the national trend of what happens in those schools, and we're trying to break that trend. And I think to break that trend, you know, you are gonna have to do that reimagining. And I do think they're poised to do it, and I think they're poised to make those starts. So, with the teachers having the mindsets and the energy and the interest in doing it, I think it's the time to invest in that.
I just think to support that is, in the five years Gordon's been there, he's hired 47 staff members. 47 hardworking, enthusiastic, energetic, I'm on the older end of the, of the staff at this point. But yes, I am, I am. But I agree in that, that the idea of the staff having involvement is critical, and I think they're ready and they're excited, and it would only, you know, go on to, you know, support that. But that's, I think that's a big piece of the amount of new staff there that has this desire.
Dr. Francis.
I just wanted to say one thing while we're on the, while we're on the topic, because I did speak with Gordon, we had a chance to kind of talk about this, and I think that one of the messages that he kept coming back to about what he would determine based on the evidence that he's looked at as to why Western has been successful is it's because they're following the strategic plan. So, when he came back to what is working and the direction that they're going and the excitement from the staff and the engagement from the students, it's based on what was laid out for him and through district expectations. And so, I felt like this was a good time to put that in, because he wanted to make that clear, that that is something that he felt he was following the evidence of what the students were producing as this was rolled out from DLE to personalized learning. And that is why that's kind of been followed through and the exciting work continues to happen. So, that's sort of where this conversation came in.
Dr. Francis.
I was gonna say, in terms of the IB issue, you know, to me, sort of the core of IB is, I see it as inquiry-based, it's cross-discipline, it's the big questions, the big pictures. And I think that we have taken that on as a district in general. And I think that what we can leave behind is some of the rigid rules that they have. And so, in some ways, I don't feel like I necessarily want to keep us restricted to something that's gonna require us to do things that we may not want to do. And I think that we can create that balance of keeping the best of it, which I think fits very well into our strategic plan and personalized learning, but not necessarily require us to follow all of the rules that they might expect for us to be certified with.
I think it is fair to say that across the district, the direction is more personalized learning acceleration, whether that's themed or named, or whether that's simply the practice that they take on as middle school leaders.
Miss Dayton.
I hear your objective, I hear the pressure, I hear the timeline, I hear the energy of the teachers. I would just throw out an offer to meet during the summer, which we normally don't do, if it helps to accelerate the work in any way. And we're not gonna do the work, but if you need checkpoints in the summer, be very happy to create more meetings.
Thanks for volunteering. Give me a call, be sure.
So, I, so I hope that you enjoyed the presentation. I feel that it's always best to have the people that are involved in the schools to really share with you what's going on. So, you wouldn't have gotten that excitement from me, but certainly from my colleagues who are you doing that. Well, I was very disappointed that he couldn't be his very snarky self, shall we say. But he, he really did, we've all sat down together and really collaborated as three entire middle schools. And that doesn't occur very often. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the middle schools, the administration, and their staff, at what a wonderful job that they've done coming together as a community.
Well, I want to thank you all for doing that. And it sounds like you've got your thinking caps on. I would say, keep them on, keep working together, because as the theme develops for Western, it may be the sharing of best practices that kicks off whatever the next generation is. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the monitoring report on whole student development.
Okay, it's, despite the comment about SEL, it's still my point of view to social-emotional learning. And our whole student development monitoring report, which really focuses on the nine of the 14 capacities in the strategic plan are personal and interpersonal skills. So, I think, if I can start, it's not that we do math and we stop math and do SEL, and we stop SEL and do this. Social-emotional learning is really looking at the personal and interpersonal capacities of the region of the graduate. So, what I tried to do is give you what I think for what was a bird's eye view of what's going on in schools. And I have something here, I'll pass it out, our extras could go out if they want, make sure the board has extras. But it's a slide that was in the presentation that we did with PTAC, and it's also part of the training we did with the administrators when we looked at what is social-emotional learning, what is whole student development as part of the strategic turn-up. So, I have people here who are gonna be able to speak to how this actually plays out and works every day in schools. But if you think of it in different, if you think of it in the tiers is probably the easiest way to do it. So, what's our tier one, social-emotional, whole student development in the schools? And that's around our whole school activities, which are basically the norm activities. And when we think about whole student development, what we're thinking about is, how do we set the groundwork for kids so they understand what we mean by what we expect you to do? So, we are very clear about what our goals are for behavior, interpersonally and personally in the schools, and those are the norms, and again, people will speak to these. Then, we have to make sure the kids actually, when they know what we expect, have the skills to be able to do what we expect. So, that's our second step program, which we're using PK through eight. And I'll talk about that just in a minute, about what we're doing at the high school. It's our mindfulness activities that we're doing throughout the district and throughout the town. And it's also part of our curriculum, in our wellness curriculum. And it's our way of making sure that kids can do what we expect them to do. Tier two is our, what do we do when kids don't seem to have those skills? How do we help them? How do we interact with kids who are engaging behaviors that are not pro-social behaviors? And how do we consequence those in ways that makes it more likely that they're gonna do the right thing the next time and not miss the chance? the right thing the next time and not misbehave again? So again, if you look at the report, the way I did it was to look at the activities that we are focusing on across the district. In the areas of, the first one is the district-wide set of norms. You can see them around here, you'll actually see them in town agencies, you'll see them in some of the police department, they've gone out and the norms are there, there's the Boys and Girls Club. We have this year created for the first time adult norms. So what do we expect people to do in meetings? So what does it mean to be here in a meeting? What does it mean to care for self and others in a meeting? I can't tell you how gratifying it is when I hear people get up to talk at board meetings and reference our norms. It's one of the few things that really transcends schools, adults and levels in the district. So I'm gonna just turn it over to Alina for a minute to just give you some updates. And I'll have, I'll introduce people as they talk about different sections. But this is Alina Jajoye Boye. Took me many years to say it. That's right, right? I got it right? Almost. No, I can't spell it. Who is a psychologic, a psychologist who does evaluations, but also really coordinates our norm activities in the district.
Hello. Hi. Very excited to be here. This is my first board meeting and this is truly an honor to be part of it. So if you ever wonder why you're wearing red or blue or yellow for that matter, I'm the one to blame. So in schools, we've been starting since about five years ago, celebrating the norms. And every other month, we dedicate an event to one of our norms. We have a very dedicated team that comes together at the end of each year and plans for the year to come. And what we try to do is take the five norms that you see on our poster, that be here, be safe, care for self and others, let go and move on, and look at also the five SEL competencies that are shown in research and coordinate the two. So every year, we can bring to the table a new, fresh look at our norms and allow kids to have an opportunity to practice those norms and also teachers to have a conversation. And not only conversations, but also we try to make it fun and bring activities and things that they can do. And as Mary said, this is supposed to be something integrated with the curriculum. And a lot of times you will see that we will integrate reading with it, writing with it, even arts. And the nice thing about it is that everybody now, since we've been doing it for a couple of years, all the teachers can collaborate with it. You will see the music teacher doing something on that day as well, you know, as well as the classroom teachers. So we've done three events this year. The next coming one would be Be Honest, Have A Voice. And we are teaching kids how to stand up for themselves, how to be assertive, how to speak up. And every year, as I said, we tweak the norm. Last year, Be Honest, we talked about character building, honesty. Sometimes we, we talk about, we bring in other concepts, mindfulness being one of them. So we just wanna give a fresh look to, to the norms. The beauty of it is that the district comes together. It's a way that everybody shares that event, the high school, from, from all the way down to the preschool. We're all wearing the same color, we're all talking the same language, and we're all celebrating the same values.
Hi, my name is Eugene Mateik and I'm the Assistant Principal at the International School of Dundee. And I, just one thing I'd like to add is, Alina does a great job of getting the lesson plans out and the color of the day for the norms and so on. And we certainly do what we need to do to make sure our community celebrates the norms on that day. We also do what we need to do to integrate the norms day-to-day. And one thing that I'll probably speak to a little later is, at the beginning of the year, the classroom teachers develop essential agreements with their students. And they make them a part of the process of pretty much saying, how are we going to behave and what are we gonna agree to in this environment in their classroom? And that's consistent across all classrooms at ISD. And when they're, when they are coming up with ideas and concepts of what they believe they should behave, we, we often tie that to not only the IB learner profile attributes, but also the district norms. And it's, those become the umbrella of how we wanna behave without the teacher really even saying anything. So it's, it's very nice to see.
The other piece that I just wanna highlight, another piece is the, I'll go briefly into mindfulness. I'll highlight this more when we do the psychology report and the other PPS services. But as you heard, the students mentioned at the last board meeting about stress, we are seeing an increasing amount of stress in students as evidenced by increasing risk assessments. Most of the risk assessments that come across my desk are about students feeling anxious, overwhelmed and threatening to hurt themselves. And I think sometimes it's not a real threat, I think it's a cry for help. But the amount of stress kids feel these days is more than any of us felt in our high school. And that's a combination of what they get from families, what they get from their peers, what they get from television and what's happening out in the world. And they are just kids who are feeling pressure a lot. And while I think a lot of people think of mindfulness as nineteen-sixties, sitting with their fingers there. I was in a class reading at OG today and I, I was reading the book when they came in from recess. And this is a class that does mindfulness activities. So when the kids came in, I said to the teacher, can we do something? She said, yeah, they have a singing bowl. And she hit the singing bowl and we all took a moment to just quiet ourselves, sit down, be here, and then they were available for the story. You can actually see kids' bodies change. They actually calm down. It's a language they have, they see pictures in their head. It saves you ten minutes of instructional time from saying, no Peter, sit down, no Peter, put your pen down. It allows you to focus kids in a very positive way, quickly, and move on. So we've done a lot of mindfulness activities. I'll speak for me real quickly, but one of the neatest things we did was a group of kids from Julian Curtis went to the first responders and did mindful activities with our first responders, who also felt, I think, the need for this kind of activity and appreciated it, not to mention the kids felt, but they were bringing something to adults. So again, it goes back to the capacities and the graduate, the norms, all of those things. The other initiative that we're having across the district in whole student, student development and part of the strategic plan is PBIS, Positive Behavior Supports and Interventions. It really looks at creating an environment where it's more likely than not that kids will do the right thing and that they want to do it because it is better for them and it's better for everyone around them. So I'm gonna ask, I think Eugene, you wanna talk about your PBIS stuff? Eugene's school is in year two. Every school, I'm sorry. We have schools that run through the cycle. It's a three-year training cycle per school. They do the first year as five full days of training with a team. Then we provide supports to the school for year two and year three through CES. And Eugene and ISD are in year two.
Okay. So the first thing I'd like to say about PBIS is, one of the very nice things about it was, we have five staff members from ISD that attended the trainings for the past two years. And we're coming to the professional learning from all different perspectives. So I myself, as the Assistant Principal, we have a specialist, our music teacher, our special education teacher, our school psychologist, and a regular ed teacher who's a grade-three teacher. So we're all looking at the school from many different perspectives. And it's really great to not only get the training, but to debrief on that training and really connect it to ISD. So we've really enjoyed it. I'll jump right into what we've done at ISD and based off of that training. One nice thing was just to reaffirm a lot of things we're already doing at ISD, but it also gave us a chance to look at our environment as a whole and where did we wanna focus our attention on? And we, through all our perspectives, we looked more closely at our behavior in the cafeteria. One of the crucial components of PBIS is that there's clear communication to the students and that there is positive supports and incentives in place. And those were certainly throughout ISD, but definitely needed work within the cafeteria, which is definitely a more informal environment and a little looser. So what we did at ISD to start is, the five of us went into the cafeteria and we collected data just to reaffirm what we were thinking. And we collected data on the volume level within the cafeteria, the unexpected behaviors, the out-of-seat behavior and so on. And we went into all the lunch periods and were quite surprised by some of the data that we collected. I didn't think we expected the numbers to be so high in certain areas, but that is true data that we saw. We then debriefed as a team and then we brought it back to the students, just as we do when we develop our essential agreements in the classroom. That's exactly what we did in the cafeteria. So we just basically said, so remember those days when we were in the cafeteria and walking around with our clipboards? Well, this is what we were doing. And we shared that data with the kids and with the lunch monitors. I think the students were a little surprised at some of their behavior. And we then asked them, what do we need to do? What are some essential agreements that we wanna create in the ISD café? So they started sharing their ideas. And we collected it from the whole school and all the lunch waves. And we then drafted an essential agreement for the café. And without really seeing this ahead of time, we did use the district norms as the umbrella to those essential agreements. One last thing we did for the café is, we, we made posters and we put it up and we, we certainly talked it through with the students, but we wanted to build in an incentive program with that as well. So we came up with what we call the Golden Spork, 'cause that's the utensil that they actually use to eat at the ISD café. So we created this Golden Spork. And every day, the café monitors look for tables of students that are exemplifying the essential agreements that the students came up with. And the students are awarded, a table is awarded with the Golden Spork. And groups of students celebrate the table that it was awarded to by singing a chant because we really wanted to focus on making sure all students felt included and proud of their peers. So that's, that was a little bit of what we did, guys.
I'm Garfield Charles. Normally, normally I'm called Gary. I'm one of the assistant deans at the high school. And just speaking about, you know, the importance of PBIS and, you know, its great impact. You know, I got one of these quotations that I felt was really powerful and really helps in reinforcing some of these ideas. Michael Fulan, he's an educational theorist. He says that effective change processes shape and reshape good ideas as they build capacity and ownership among participants. And I think, you know, at the high school, we are really focusing on sort of, you know, building a sort of new lifestyle, a lifestyle that students can take with them from the high school to that next level, whatever that next level, you know, might entail. Whether it's at college or whether it's at the workplace, you know, we are preparing students for that journey. How do we do it in terms of, you know, when we examine Greenwich High School, it's almost like a melting pot because, you know, we, we serve as that filter in, you know, having all the students coming from the middle schools. And we have over two thousand students there. And as everyone, you know, as you all know, we have the huge facility in terms of, you know, just going back, thinking about the student center that, you know, can be really overpowering at times. But how do we do it in terms of, you know, PBIS activities? One, we definitely reinforce all the norms that started, you know, from elementary school, as everyone mentioned, you know, through middle school. And for the past two or three years, you know, the high school, we have really made a significant shift in following along that line and mirroring these norms in every strategy that we impart at the high school. Just last month, we just wrapped up, let go and move on. Every month now, we have started, along with the assistant deans, we, we have made it a celebration. And we have activities. We had students sign in a banner in the middle of the student center, what does it mean? So we want them to really internalize these norms, not simply to bark at the words, you know, when they see it, but simply to analyze it, reflect on it, what does it mean to them? This month, we are moving on to care for self and others. And we actually launched that activity today in the student center with some lollipops. And we had some stickers, "Hard Chief," you know, because it's Valentine's approaching. So these are some of the strategies by which, you know, we really want to get students motivated and driven and excited, you know, about these norms. The use of short video clips within our cardinal views. We have students, and I'll probably talk about some of these students later on, these are the linked-up mentors who are upperclassmen. They spend, you know, sufficient time coming up with short clips that we can have all the entire school have access to this information. So we really want to bombard the student with information about the norms. House Awards, very wonderful, you know, event. Yesterday, again, I'm not sure why everything culminated yesterday, but yesterday we also had our second marking period, House Award, where students are given awards based on different, you know, qualities. For example, do the right thing. And for example, do the right thing is linked to the norm, be honest, care for self and others. And we really want to reinforce, you know, these values that we have. Perseverance. Parents were proud, you know, we had a couple parents who were there. And for the first time, they felt, you know, very special to be there with their son or daughter because normally they probably will not see them receiving an award in terms of academic. Ally Award, being supportive. And that ties in for care for self and others. One hundred and ten percent award. And a lot of teachers were actually, you know, signing up their student for this award. By the way, teachers nominate these students and, you know, they, we really celebrate that part of it in terms of, you know, teachers. Teachers also receive an award. And so we have students with their teachers present at these award ceremonies. Last one at least, we have the Degradate Award, as we know, in terms of school spirit. And, you know, something that we are really pushing a lot for. Moving on to other activities that we have, names here.
We have some, some questions, should we tap the questions to us?
I just wanted to, one more thing and then you don't remember questions. Part of the strategic plan is the teaching of the norms?
I'm sorry, that's the second step program. This year, we're piloting it across this, last year, we've selected the program, this year is our first year of implementation, next year is the expectation that all grades P-K through eight will use it. We have to come up with a program for the high school. Second step is coming out with a new high school program this summer. We're not sure that's the program we're gonna go with, but that's something we want to discuss. Let me just give Suzanne a couple of minutes to talk about second step at the middle school and then we'll open up for questions.
Um, this is our second year using step, it's second step. Last year, it was based on kits, it was very difficult. Last year, it was based on kits, it was very difficult to implement. This year is online. We found it to be extremely easy. We're 45 advisors, 600 kids, they do the same lesson at the same time, and I'm responsible for making sure everybody knows what they're doing. And it's very, very easy for teachers to do that. I've gotten really good feedback from the teachers from our state school climate committee, which is about 15 people are on it. That is, it's easy to implement. They do line up very well with the norms. As we tend to, when the norm activities for the year are mapped out, we kind of group the lessons according to that. So it's something that we're excited about, that kids are engaged in, and it's, that's kind of the direction we're, I don't know, the other two middle schools are also doing this, they're using it.
Just one more thing and then we'll open up for questions. Another part of the strategic plan for us was the survey. So last year, we piloted the survey based on the norms, that was to really pilot the survey. Not, this year will be our baseline administration of the survey for data. Leah is also a statistician, was able to tell us that the survey does measure what we're trying to do. I'll open up for questions and I'm going to go to the negative part of the report, which is the suspension expulsion.
How will Susan get to it?
Oh, I'll get there.
Mr. Scher.
I kind of have two parts here, so, but I'll get to them quickly. What is social thinking?
Social thinking is a tier-two program that we use for kids who have a very difficult time understanding the perspective of another person. So a lot of behaviors of kids are because they don't understand the perspective of someone else about the impact of their behavior. So in social thinking, it's really, sometimes we do it for whole class, because we sometimes have whole classes that have trouble doing that. But you'll see it used more with kids for whom that social perspective taking is one of the roots of the behavior problems that they're having.
That's good, actually. Lots of people are on that social work. That actually fits to my second question. You were talking about stress, and I was really struck by you listed sources of stress. And it was home, peers, environment? You said nothing about our staff. Why is that?
Our staff imposing the stress?
Yeah, creating stress for, you talked about anxiety and the connection to stress. But, and I'm kind of one of the self-aware social thinking thing, you know, to the degree that, you know, what are we actually doing so that teachers are becoming aware of what their actions might be and how they're creating stress for kids? I'll give you, I mean, it happens at the high school, right? It does, because we have teachers who are like, you know, they love their subject, they love their class, they're teaching at the highest level, they have expectations. Some of them aren't even aware the degree to which their intensity on their subject is actually driving kids to be anxious and stressed. I'll give you another one, you know, and what kind of, how do you take actions to de-stress, de-anxiety? We were talking earlier about summer school, right? Some of the ideas that we came up with on this committee is let kids retire their coursework during the summer if they so choose, so that they're not so loaded. You know, that's like an actual tangible thing you can do. Another one might be, which I know we still don't do at the high school, is, and I've heard the answer to this, we don't take our kids and say, "This is the day you can assign math homework. This is the day you can assign humanities homework. This is the day..." It's just like, we just, we say words like executive functioning, we need kids to learn how to deal with this, so they should just learn with it. And my job as the staff person is just to tell you in advance when it's due. It's your job as the student to deal with it. So, and maybe that's good. I don't know whether that's a good thing or not. I'm just wondering to what degree we've got the subjects integrated, because we seem to talk a lot about the outside environment, but I didn't hear us talking about the inside environment of what we're doing as an organization and how we might adjust what we're doing. And, no, I know every teacher is aware of kids, cares about kids, you wouldn't be in this business if you weren't. So it's not a question about that, it's a question of self-awareness, and then how do you translate that into actions to make adjustments? So Mary, can you talk about that a lot?
I'll talk a little bit, but I think everybody's kind of jumping out of their seat to talk about that one. When you talk about homework and getting rid of it, you are preaching to the choir.
Right, I'm talking about coordinating, we had this whole conversation about team teaching, this whole coordination, that's what I'm trying to get at.
And I'm sorry if I did not include teachers, I should say the adults in kids' lives all add to stress. I would add coaches into that, you know, music teachers. You're right, each one of us as an adult sees our world and projects it on that kid and doesn't pay attention to the fact that there are 22 other adults doing the same thing. And kids feel it, and they don't always have the best way to talk about it. So I agree with you 100%, Peter. I think we need to...
How do you translate it into action, though?
Some of the things we've talked about, and they're going to be district-wide things, are do we limit the number of AP courses kids take? Do we limit the amount of homework? Do we offer something, do we make the studio warmers so kids can stretch out stuff? Do, you know, what do we do as adults, understanding that none of us own it all, we each own a piece of it, and for each of us, our piece is the most important piece? So I'm his gymnast, her gymnastics coach, and I really do think three hours a night of practice is what she needs, because that's my world. And you're the history teacher, AP history, and you want two hours a night of homework. And you're the mom saying, "If you want to get into Harvard, you really need to go out and build houses for Habitat Humanity. Could you do that on Tuesdays?" It's going to take a community of adults coming together to say, "We have to release some of our expectations and we have to agree to back off of our kids."
Okay, I have to interrupt to extend the meeting. Shall we extend the meeting to 10:30?
That's additional stress, but I can...
Can I let all stress?
All right, we have a motion to...
I'm with you 100%, Peter. I think it's going to take the...
Hang on, we've got to deal with this first. We have a motion to extend the meeting till 10:30. We have a second. All right, all those in favor? E zero. Yeah, Ms. O'Neill's got some questions.
I've got some very mundane questions. So I want to know what the budget is, what the budget is with SEL component, and what kind of training does the staff, how much of the staff is trained to do this intervention or whatever you want to call it? But in the elementary schools, what kind of training has the staff had with the middle schools? And what is the budget that we're using for materials and for training staff and...
The second step materials are fairly self-explanatory, so teachers can really pick them up and use them. We do have behavior coaches, Alina's out in schools, Fabian's out in schools. They do grade-level trainings, they do individual class trainings. We use some of our professional learning...
But is there a minimum amount of hours of training that staff should have?
No.
And is there a budget number for this program?
For second step, that's coming out?
No, for the whole caboodle that you're doing?
No, we're doing most of it with existing resources.
And there is a curriculum, though?
There is the second step curriculum that comes out of the PPS project.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dayton?
So I'm sorry Peter left the room, because I wanted to echo everything he said. And this is a personal view, I really have a problem with our grading system, because in the real world, if you complete a project, that's all that's needed. But in our grading system, if you miss two, three, four of those steps leading up to the completion of the project, it has a huge impact on the way you're perceived, your grade, whether you turn in work on the right day. I do understand that time is something that eventually in the workplace makes sense, that you meet deadlines, but in a personalized learning environment, what really matters is your growth, what you've learned. It's not, okay, on Monday, I moved this piece of paper from my home to the school's inbox. That's not the way we should be looking at it. It creates unnecessary stress. It's not good for people with executive functioning problems, it's not particularly good for boys. I really, I think that needs to be looked at in your larger initiative. And on that point, I have data on page 11 that third graders, after a five-week mindfulness initiative, felt worse. They worried more about doing well in school, and they felt ashamed when they made mistakes in school. I mean, this is third graders, and we're looking at, more than a third of them felt that way. In third grade, there's something really wrong there.
You're not going to get an argument from anybody at the end of the table.
I mean, that's shocking to me.
Ms. Reindeer?
Just because I want to, I want to compliment the report, because it was very thorough and there was a lot of information in it, so thank you for all that detail. And that's why I said I almost didn't get to the end, because it took me over two nights to read it. So I see the, and I know you're going to talk about it, the increase in the expulsions, and then I was trying to figure out what led to the increase. And I see the increase basically is coming from incidents involving substance abuse, so it goes back to the survey we approved in the last meeting. And I echo Jennifer's point about boys, I only have sons. And one of the things that I experienced is as they got older, it seemed harder to recognize them. So I hope that in the high school, as you give out these awards, I'm not saying pick a boy, but they do need some love too, in their teenage years. And as a parent, who tried not to stress my kids out, maybe they would think differently, one of the things that I always said to myself, "This person, this child will never be 14 again in their lives, they'll never be 15, they'll never be 16, they'll never be 17, so let them have those years. They have their whole life to freak out and stress out."
You do, but I also want to make sure we get to the expulsion.
And I just want to add one thing in response to that. If anything comes out of this report and I could ask anything of all of you sitting around the table, is every time you make a decision, think about what the impact is on that third-grade child, on that sixth-grade child, on that 10th-grade child. It's hard to do that all the time, and you say things like, "We should do this, we should have fields so they could play sports 24 hours a day." I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing. It's just think about what is the impact for kids when we make decisions like that.
So I just want to add one more tiny thing. I'm actually in school every day and working with kids. We do this very nice mindfulness five-week program, and it does bring more awareness to kids. And every week, we start by saying, "How was mindfulness helping you? What were you, what kind of things did you discover by doing it on?" So we like collecting data, and we do everything by looking at how, you know, how it impacts based on data. And I have to tell you about 94% of kids, and I'm talking preschool to high school, 94% of them experience and attribute the stress that they feel based on homework and school-related assignments. And that is equivalent to a grade level. So that, that as a psychologist, when I look at it, I am thinking of, you know, if that's 94% of what you're dealing with, then maybe what can we do differently to help them support that?
Okay, good.
Can I just say something about the whole work? At the high school, we identified that that was a major issue. We had a committee set up that comprised student faculty and administration. And the findings from the committee was eventually implemented. Now teachers actually follow a guideline in terms of, you know, how many hours or minutes they can assign, well, homework to any individuals to them. So that has been identified and recognized. Also, in terms of stress, we did set up a committee at the high school, again, equal representation in terms of, you know, student, faculty, and administration. And some of the recommendations that came from that were actually used at the high school. So at the high school, we are very mindful of the stress and the high stress that students, especially in Greenwich, have to undergo. And it's within the bigger school, we have to look at, you know, the pressures, the demand for college creates extreme pressure and stress on our students. And we are mindful of that at the high school in terms of, you know, assisting.
I think what you're seeing here is a representation, a representative group of people from your staff. I think they're aware of it, I think, first of all, I just want to thank them for hanging with us this late, because I know that they've had full days and they have to work tomorrow. But that's how passionate people are about looking at the whole student here. And you should, you should feel somewhat confident that people do have your kids' backs when going to schools. The bad news is the suspension expulsion data. It's bad news, but not so bad news. For some reason, last year, I believe, was a data aberration. I was real happy, and I did the happy dance, but I think it was an aberration. But still, we're going down. We're still seeing fewer incidents. We are seeing an increase in substance abuse issues, and hence the survey. The vaping is a major issue. And vaping, not only with tobacco products, but TSC and other things, it's an issue. And we're doing a lot of different things. We have programs at the high school. Unfortunately, it's a middle school issue as well. The good news also is while the percentage of kids who are Hispanic in the district is going up, the percentage of kids who experience discipline, percentage-wise, is going down. It's still disproportionate, but it did go down a little bit. And I think that's due to Avid, the mentoring programs, looking at academics, doing a lot of work that people are doing in schools. The interesting thing is the expulsions, if you notice, there was a dramatic increase in the number of days kids served, if you look at that number. What happens is, and you should know this in board members, because you sit in those hearings, we're seeing more emphasis on returning kids back to school with contracts, monitoring the contracts, less time away from school, more time back in a place where there's positive adults who can, who can structure it. Doesn't always work, but it seems to be working in more cases than not. The attendance policy at the high school has had a dramatic effect on suspensions.
Can you explain? What was that change of the attendance policy?
They are actually, and your kids speak to it probably better than I do, they actually monitor the attendance, they call kids in when they are not attending, and then kids can work through whether they appeal it or whatever. It used to be you were out 10 days and then we suspended you. Now think about that. It's going to make a whole lot of sense, but that didn't stop us from doing it for generations in schools. But I think the high school's really working together with kids, and that's one of the major goals of the assistant deans, is to be, to get those kids early when they have one or two absences, where they're coming in late and really make a difference with them. It's still a high school issue predominantly. Western's made a big change in their suspension expulsion rate. I think you're seeing with everything, all the work that these people are doing. I echo what Peter says 100%. I think we need to, as a whole, try to think about what we're asking kids to do and address stresses of it.
Any questions, comments? I mean, we're obviously seeing a statewide and national trend in terms of the students that are experiencing this, so it's not unusual, and it's still troublesome all nonetheless.
It's an area where I wish we weren't setting the standard, but unfortunately, I think in many cases, we're a microcosm of the world. Again, I can't thank these people enough, I think we should, they are the ambassadors to what they do in schools.
Go home, get some sleep, so you can smile for the kids tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is the policy review, Ms. O'Neill, and we have a lot of them to talk about. Maybe we can talk about the process first, so we're just going through what we're doing.
So the 9,000 series of the bylaws, as you know, definitely, which we are moving from our own policies, policy governance, to the cave model, the traditional model of policies. And so we started with bylaws first, because those are the things, those are the policies that govern how we operate. And so we went through them. Dr. Francis and Kathleen and myself did this along with Phil and... Oh, yeah, Peter. And Bruce Storm, who is the consultant that's working with us to kind of help with the process. So, anyway, we reviewed these. We reviewed these in chunks, and we reviewed them and whatever, and made edits, and learned a lot about Google Docs and challenges of Google Docs.
How many middle school kids help us?
Yeah, right. But anyway, so, there are a lot of them. I don't expect that we'll get through them all tonight. But I thought if we kind of looked at them numerically, and if anybody had a question, say, about any of the first 10, and we would do it that way. So, that this way, we'd know if we had a backtrack at another time, we'd come up. So, if you look at those by numbers...
But before you jump into the week, can you actually talk about the process? Is your expectation of approving this, all this, in two weeks? Or what's the...
No.
What's the... What's the process here? Because this is a little different. We're doing like 30 of these at once.
Right. So, what we're gonna do is take as much time as we need each week to go through them. But these are not big changes. They're pretty much follow our own policy. So, that's why I wanted to take and see what we've... See what we could do in terms of chunks. That's why I didn't have it all out in session. I said, "Let's see what we do in chunks. What we get done, we get done. If we don't, we do it next week, we do it the week after, and so on, so forth." Because you wanna take the time to do it well.
And these... Because we changed our policy. This is just gonna be one read? Or how's this supposed to work now?
It's the policy that we change is a board back. It'll be one read, and then approval at the next read. But we don't have to. If we need more time, we can take more time. Or we can approve five of them, and then move on, you know, to others. So, that's why I decided to take...
The reason I'm asking the question is, you know, this is a lot to digest.
It is.
And they're connected to each other. So, it's great for you guys that have been on the committee, but for the rest of us to... And I know you're kind of like, "Hey, we did it." So... There's an element of, "Hey, trust us, we did it." But no, 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 I know that. But my point is, that's the point of committees, right? You rely on other people to do the work. So, everybody does all the people don't need to do it. But at the same time, I just...
I want to chunk it like in groups of five. So, we weren't taking on all 45 of them.
Sure, Dr. Francis.
When you say that, is it that you're saying, "Well, these five are pretty simple. We're just gonna say yes. We think those can go forward."
No, I am saying that any... Anybody who has a question about any of the five.
Right. And then if other ones are ones that... Because you might say the first five we're done with today anyway. And the next five, maybe there's one that we feel that we need to continue having discussion on.
Well, that's fine. But it has to be some order. You just can't say, "Here's 45 policies."
Ms. Raven?
So, I read most of them.
You get a whole document.
There's probably about five I didn't get to. I was more engrossed in the SCL report. I asked for the red line. And you said that if I had any specific questions... But now, realizing, were they on a Google Drive in like a Word format before you PDF'd them? Because then we could just go and see what changes you made. I don't have major issues. But I just sometimes wondered, did we write that? Or was that... Came from CAE?
I'd say 99% of it came from CAE. The only thing we might have changed is like, we need to have... How many people are on the board? Or when do we notify? How do we fill a vacancy? What one big one that change... Discussion, and I pointed that out in email, was, and that's further on, about electronic participation. And whether, if we allow that, would that person be counted towards a quorum or not? So, that was a thing. The other one was on committees. So, that would be the only thing. I didn't... We didn't read by them from ours. We looked at CAE and only made the changes that we had to make.
Google Docs work. You go in, you can see all the changes that you made. You don't have to see it in the red lines.
So, somebody that participated in the process, it really wasn't taking them in Google. You get them from CAE. They're not... It's not set up to do that. But it was a kind of arduous process to get to where we are. I guess, do you wanna make a recommendation to pick, I don't know, the first five or the five you wanna do with at the next meeting? I think everybody's open to your idea.
Yeah, I'm just saying to sort of have some order to the discussion that if anybody has anything they wanna say about any of the five tonight... That's not saying we can't bring it up again. But I'm just saying, if anybody has a thought, has read that, has questions, or whatever.
Ms. Olson?
Yeah, I would actually just like to bring up the one about electronic participation because it's timely for me. I have a schedule. I'm away November 22nd. So... November 22nd, sorry. Next to the next meeting. Oh, wow. You do plan that one badly, but no. That's funny. No.
It's a 9321, I believe.
Yes. So, I just wanna take a look at that one and just... Because that's... From what it says is, basically, that it allows electronic participation whenever there's communication via or to a quorum of the board. For the communication in person, everybody needs electronic equipment. What's that? I don't have to read the whole thing. But the point is, basically, the gist is that you have to run it by the superintendent and the chair.
Right.
Anything else?
Right. Part of that is just so that the 22nd word part way. We need to make sure we got a full line.
Right.
We don't wanna tell you what happened last night. We've done that, and Lauren can tell you it didn't work great. Ms. Stowe?
But so, why don't we keep this one on? If you don't mind, 9321. Can we focus on 9321 for a second? And one of the key things here, Meg, since you did bring it up, is one of the decisions we made. Because I understand, Lauren, your point that it's a little frustrating that it's not redlined against what CAE provided. But this is one where we basically made a decision, right, between two different routes to go. So, for example, you can have participate electronically, and that would be considered part of the quorum. Where there are scenarios in which you could participate electronically, but you would not be counted towards the quorum. We thought that this was our opinion amongst the three of us, that we are attracting board members that have busy lives and who are traveling and professional. And if you're willing to call in from someplace, God bless you, and we will count you as part of the quorum. But that was a sort of strategic decision we made. There was a scenario in which you have to physically be in a room to be considered in the quorum. Well, I'm saying that that was one of the decisions.
Yeah, so some of the... Just to make it easier to understand, some of the CAE model policies have option A, option B. And that would lead to a discussion amongst the committee members as to which option made more sense for us to educate ourselves. We would look at our policies, and we might go look at other districts and see how they do it as well.
If I recall correctly, I don't think CAE and one of the footnotes was recommending electronic participation. But we discussed it and decided that this was the 21st century that if people needed to, they should be able to participate electronically and be counted, you know?
And the preference in the policy, by the way, is for live participation. But we understand people have lives, work trips come up. What's happened to me before, it's happened others. So, it just makes sense. Ms. Stowe?
Sorry to catch you on that theme. However, it was, I guess, decided, although I don't remember applying on this one, about the... What? About the secure... Yeah, the executive session. I don't remember saying that. And then specifically, given your email, that we could obviously have a dial-in number, and it could be secure.
Well, the problem is you don't know who's on the other end of the phone. A public meeting is public for everybody. Somebody sitting in a room full of people talking on a phone, you don't know who's listening in. That's the security.
But if they had a secure dial-in number, that is...
They could put it on speakerphone. They could have people on extensions. It is a bad precedent. I honestly, I'm not for allowing people to participate in the executive session by telephone.
Anybody else have an opinion about...
Yeah, I do.
With all the legal issues we've been considering lately, I wouldn't support that. Because, not that I don't trust the technology, but wherever the person is, the surrounding people could get a sense of the conversation by overhearing. And I just, I don't think it's wise.
Ms. Stowe?
I mean, I can only pound the table on this one. But I've been on... I've had a lot of conversations over the course of my career where I was astute enough to make sure I wasn't on a speakerphone and had it to my ear. And that if I felt someone walking into the room, that should be a part of the conversation, I would go someplace else.
This is compliance run amok. I mean, if the eight people here can't figure out that you're in a confidential situation and you need to protect confidentiality. The reality of it is, if the objective is to protect confidentiality... I mean, I'm not sure where we're going with this. Because let me tell you what. Any one of us could leave that meeting and go tell anybody we want what happened in it. So, if the basic fundamental principle isn't that the eight board members and staff or lawyers who are in the executive session are going to properly, personally manage confidential information, you know, then we got a much bigger problem. Well, I've nev... Well, okay.
Dr. Francis?
Yes, when I read that, I thought, "Oh, I don't want to be making that decision." And I would tend to say, I would feel comfortable allowing people to call in.
Aside from the trust part, if you don't allow the person to call in, then who's gonna brief them? Like, you're not gonna know anything... Like, you're... Are you entitled to be briefed on what happened? Because it's not like, you know, you might be sick or on a business trip, you know?
You'd certainly be entitled to be briefed. But that would be most likely face-to-face or one-to-one conversation. Which is...
We're not voting on it anyway. That is a good exchange if people have, you know, thoughts about it.
All right. So, Ms. O'Neill, I just wanna make sure I understand what's gonna happen at the next meeting with these policies. Are there certain other policies that you wanna put forward for adoption?
Well, I was gonna ask, for me, you know... I'd ask anybody else if they've got a policy that they wanna put forward.
I wouldn't be ready to vote on any of these.
No, I'm not asking you to vote.
No, no, I know you're not. Peter just asked that question.
I'm asking... No, I think he's asking if anybody wants to bring up something for discussion.
I was gonna bring up meetings.
We've cut five more minutes, so...
913233. Well, I think just worth bringing up any issues that come over. That doesn't mean... That doesn't mean we have to build on it next time. It just gives us feedback from people about ideas on it.
The committee bylaw would be 9130 if somebody's looking for it.
Comment 4233.
913233.
9132.
But she said we were voting again.
We're not voting. Okay. So...
I think one of the things to talk about is the curriculum committee, which is a big part. And then, you know, I think just the definition of the finance, just because I think that's new to us. So, I think that would be important for people to review. I think those are the main things I would point out is... That it's just that people have ideas or thoughts and have it come on.
Do you wanna discuss those now or do you want to do it at the next meeting? It's a good idea to highlight the policies that we don't talk about.
All right, maybe we're all frightened.
Yeah, all right. So, we certainly can keep this as a discussion item. I think we'll put it as a discussion item for the next meeting. I think in advance of the meeting, if people have particular policies that they wanna talk about, maybe send a note to Ms. O'Neill so that she's prepared, or send questions. And that way, we can pull those up. And I don't know that we'd be ready to vote at the next meeting, but I think so.
So, are next week, are we Barbara, the eighth, or the ninth? The, you know, the eighth. So, if our next week is the eighth, if anybody could send in any other comments or feedback or things we need to look at by the morning? The eighth or the seventh? That would be helpful? Is it possible?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it... What's on our agenda? I really talked about this in the agenda plan.
Okay, sorry, I have to interrupt. We have to extend the meeting. Can I extend the meeting of 15 minutes up to 42?
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a second from Dr. Francis. All those in favor of extending the meeting? Mr. Scher?
No.
Mr. Scher wrote, "No, 71." Yeah. Yeah, well, the principle is in a policy that needs to be changed. It's sitting before you. Okay, so, we'll have a discussion of these. And if board members can send any questions to PGC. All right. That leads us to action items, which is the 2018, 2019 tuition and fees. Ms. O'Donnell?
I'm sorry, Peter. Just before you move on, on our agenda plan, we don't have this on our next...
We can put it on our agenda plan for the next meeting.
Was that the... Is that the proposal?
That would be the proposal. Put it on as a discussion item. All right, Ms. O'Donnell? Tuition and fees?
Yes. Can you do this?
Yes.
Okay. So, taking feedback from our prior meetings, there was a question as to the financial... Sorry, it's late. Financial, I guess, viability of offering a free reduced rate to students who are advised to take the course that are not free or reduced lunch rate students. So, we did look at the numbers. The summer revenue program, just to remind you, is a triple R account. So, it's revenue that unlike others, the quarterback gets to keep. We receive about $200,000 annually in summer revenues. If we were to change this policy, we'd be taking like a 25% loss in those revenues. So, I flew this forward with a recommendation to leave the policy as is. Students who are eligible for free or reduced rate will get it for every course they want for the summer.
Any discussion? I mean, I'll say, I think the board had discussed offering a free reduced rate for... A reduced rate for those students who were recommended to do this either for recapture of credits or for some other reason, you know, academic advancement, basically, or catch up. I don't know how everybody feels about it. Well, that's for free or reduced lunch students. This would have extended to students who were not free or reduced lunch, but were recommended to take these courses. Why wouldn't we do that? That is what you asked for.
No, we... No, we did. But we said, "Guys, enrichment courses are not courses that are offered to kids who would necessarily be recommended for the growth..." So, you said, "Well, we've just applied it to everything." You know, why would we offer a reduced rate to a kid to take an enrichment course in, I don't know, some elective area if it wasn't relating to their specific academic need? Why would we... We wouldn't do that. It should be limited to... It shouldn't be to everything. It should be limited to that subject area where the kid...
Because it's centered. You don't think about that from a policy position. And I understand exactly what you're saying. But I also understand that from a policy position, you're free to use. Kids are always free to use, whether they're going to have...
No, no, I'm not talking about the free reduced lunch, Joe. We're not talking about that.
You're just talking about identified kids who have a gap or a...
I think we said we're gonna... I think we said we're gonna, I'll just replay this, so we're all in sync, she didn't even, I know it's late, right? In our elementary program today, we look at kids who are below proficiency or have a growth issue and we invite them and we say, we're gonna weigh through the fees more or less.
And you want to extend that to the little.
Well, it's totally, whether you're free or reduced lunch is irrelevant. Your economic status is irrelevant, it's based on your academic need, right? We don't have that same concept in a high school program. The only differentiation we have is, is what's your economic need? It seems counterintuitive if the purpose of the program is to focus on their academic need and say, in this subject area, based upon what your specific academic need is, well, I'd encourage you to go to summer school in that area of academic need and take a course in that area. I would want it to have a very, I want it to be frictionless, no bar, just, just go take it. So, I understand that's 55,000, 55,000 doesn't sound a lot to me, a $153,000 budget, but at the same time, it sounds like that number may be a little bit on the high side because of the way that we implied it. So if it's everybody who's recommended for everything, it means 55 is gonna be the high watermark. It's likely to cost less than that, is I guess what I'm gonna take out of this. Because if we restrict it only to the academic need that they're there for, which they were identified for, then that's not gonna be everything they may, they may or may not take. Is that true?
Dr. Carewell.
The only students that are identified at the highest school level are the students going into SOAR or the transition students from grade eight to grade nine. They pay the reduced rate because they have been recommended for that program because they are not ready for jumping into the high school. So we really want to help those students. So that's the transition. So that has traditionally been, we recommend it to you, you come at that price. For the students that we would like to see take courses so that they can improve their growth projection, what happens is that those students typically, even though we have the guidance counselors work with them, typically do not attend summer school because they have other commitments that they have to participate in during the summer. If a student that we feel really needs to come and we can entice them to come, and you know what it's like to entice high school students to get up early in the summer, come to school and do some work, I'm just kidding, some of the kids are really excited to come. Then we would individually look at those students and say, should we have them? Is that going to entice them to come or not? But we don't have that many students that come to the high school because they're not meeting their expected growth. That's the reality.
Dr. Francis.
When is the 55,000 or 50,000 those calculated?
Was from last summer, all the students that were advised to take a course based on counselors' advisement. Secondary, high school.
Well, that's the thing, that doesn't fit to what Angie just said.
They don't recommend, they advise.
The only relevant ones are the SOAR kids.
So they're advising them to take it because they're having credit recovery, they're behind, they need to catch up in some way?
Right.
And if all of them did that, that's how much it costs? Or if you went back and looked at how many actually did it and then you gave them the reduction? So if the ones who actually did it would cost us the 5,000 to cover it.
Alright, let me just make sure I understand, if we make this change, if the board recommends, actually votes to adopt a change to, to give a reduced price to those students that are advised, recommended, whatever your terminology is, the cost is about $50,000, that will come out of the revolving fund. That's what I'm understanding? Okay, Mr. Sher, you want to make a motion? Well, this is an action item and we've discussed this, this is our third or fourth meeting.
What happens to the money, all the money that we get from the revolving?
Okay, so I guess the question for Ms. O'Neill is what happens if we do this, what happens to the revolving fund?
Yeah, what do we, what do we do with the money that we make on summer school?
I'm gonna move with the, I have a bunch of documents in front of me, this analysis, I'm gonna move with the fees as proposed at the last meeting, the fee schedule as proposed at the last meeting, could have appropriate caveats in the document. Right, remember this, we had this little discussion last time about the caveats and what they meant.
Right, they were incorrect.
They were corrected, right? Okay, well, you should look at the version before you, make sure you understand your voting. This is a one-year deal. I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the fee schedule as proposed by the administration.
From the state, any further discussion? All those in paper? Alright, passes eight zero, thank you. We move on to you, agenda plan. Alright, so tonight we said we were going to add a, the policy back as a discussion item for the meeting on the 22nd, also adding a action item for field. And then a TV schedule would be an in-depth discussion with K G and D, which we might do as a just in-depth meeting.
I think you're gonna have to add a policy for every meeting.
Okay, as a place for that.
I was gonna ask, does it make sense, I'm looking at that agenda, it's really got a bunch of stuff on it. I'm wondering, I know you guys all sat around and drew this, for those of us who didn't, I'm wondering if it makes sense to have a focus session on it, and power it out and get it done instead of chunking it out? Because we could see, we could.
No, we don't have a lot to power it out, to tell you the truth.
Alternatively, we could like.
Microphone, sorry. Yes, Ms. Stowe.
Yeah, alternatively, we could actually, I might be foolish enough to vote, to sacrifice myself for the first round, like actually show what we did in an email. No? You think that's crazy?
Nobody else is gonna do it if you do.
I said the first round.
No, it's not, it's not helping in this situation.
Okay, I just, I do want to point out, we have an executive session before that meeting, so we're already looking at a lengthy agenda. So there are two things that come to mind. One is, policy governance has a set meeting, any member is welcome to go, and maybe then something we can avail ourselves of. Or in the alternative, move it to the work session for March.
Can I make one other proposal? Is that, I think there's a ton of these that, that nobody really cares about. So I think if you could just sort of decide which ones you feel need to be discussed and then we could say, no one felt that any of this group of 15 need to be discussed, let's vote on them together through.
I've got some time for emails to tell me.
I know, you do.
Right, and, and we've gotten that, so I think that that would be the assignment. Yeah, so whichever ones people feel like they need to discuss, and then maybe we just assign one to be discussed.
Alright, we will pencil it in for the 22nd, and we can decide whether there's gonna be any action items or discussion items or vote, we'll hold a, we'll hold a place for that. We'll pen the policy governance meeting. Dr. Bill Day.
Two things, I do not believe textbooks is going to take an hour at your next meeting, so you're gonna space some time there, so that's good news. You do have an executive session, don't want to forget that on the 22nd. We have one to two inches of snow expected overnight, it's probably the worst time of it, it's gonna be 6:00 to 8:00 AM, but it's gonna start 2:00 to 4:00 AM, so look for that 4:30 to 4:00 call, you never have.
So what happens for expulsion here?
No, I think if we're delayed, it supposedly gets delayed, but I don't think anybody sent an email around, so I'm.
But they, they want to be text, they don't want to be emailed, the two attorneys.
I have their phone numbers. So we're, but there is the students' council. Which panel is tomorrow?
It's Dr. Francis, myself, Ms. Stowe and Mrs. Raven, something for O'Neill. Michael, why don't we talk offline afterwards? How about a motion to adjourn?
Wait, one more thing, we're the SCL, how do you say that? We're the indoor girls track champions.
Alright, with that, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, looks like Dr. Francis, alright, we are adjourned.